James City County School Board to order. And before we take the role, I want to take a moment to welcome our newest school board member, Ms. Donner, to the, to the board. Welcome, Ms. Donner. Thank you for throwing your hat in the ring and in our communities. Thank you, Ms. Donner. Welcome. All right. Ms. Aller, would you take the role, please?
Sir. Dr. Beers.
Yeah.
Mrs. Donner. Mrs. Hummel. Mrs. Ortego.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Mr. Dowell.
Here. Ms. Hunley is with us via electronic communication. She's out of the state at the moment, but present. And can I have a motion to approve her attendance via electronic communication? Item 1.3.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Ms. Hunley to attend via electronic communication.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Ortego.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Hi, Ms. Hunley. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Good. All right. Welcome. All right. And if I can have a motion to approve the agenda as presented for this budget work session.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Ortego. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Any discussion on the agenda? Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Ortego.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
All right. Without further delay, we'll pass it on to Dr. Heron. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. We're excited to start our discussion of next year's budget. And Ms. Ewing and several staff and all of the senior staff have worked hard to prepare some preliminary information for you this evening. And I'm going to hand straight over to our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Ewing.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board. This afternoon, we will be presenting and discussing preliminary information related to the fiscal year 24 operating budget. As we go through the presentation, other members from the senior leadership team will be joining us and sharing information from their respective areas. And we will pause periodically for questions. This is an overview of the items that we will be reviewing this afternoon. First will be background information related to the requirements for developing the budget. Now I'll provide a brief overview of the budget process to date. We'll review the historical enrollment information as well as the projection for next year. We will then take a preliminary look at the revenue based on Governor Yonkin's budget, as well as review mandatory and essential operating expenditure increases. And then we'll summarize everything that we've presented to you this afternoon and go over next steps. There are a couple of state code sections that apply to school divisions. The first one is Code Section 15.2-2503, Time for Preparation and Approval of Budget and Contents. This code section requires that honor before April 1st of each year, we must approve a budget of need to pass on to our governing bodies, both Williamsburg and James City County. The second state code section, 22.1-92, Estimate of Money Is Needed for Public Schools, requires the superintendent, with the approval of the school board, to provide an estimate of the amount of money that is considered to be needed to support the public schools in the division, and that the budget must be set up by each major classification or category that has been prescribed by the Board of Education. We use our strategic plan's priorities to guide the development of the budget, to ensure that the budget aligns with the goals of our strategic plan, and that it supports the needs and goals of the school division, taking into consideration the input of our stakeholders. We will show the alignment with the goals of Elevate Beyond Excellence for the budget increases at our next budget work session on January 17th. In the October-November timeframe, we began collecting input from each school principal and each department administrator for the operating budget. At that time, they entered their requests into our financial system, and we then met with departments individually to discuss their requests and determine their needs. In December, we began discussing and evaluating the cost center requests with the superintendent's senior leadership team to ensure that what we present to you is indicative of necessity. This process will continue throughout this month as we will share additional information with you at the next budget work session on January 17th. We are presenting the items that were determined to be necessary to the division so that we may gather your opinion as to how those needs should be prioritized into a final budget. The Local Composite Index, or LCI, is the state's measurement of each locality's ability to pay for public education. The formula takes into consideration the changes in property values and taxes, the local income and retail sales, and compares it to that for the entire state. Each locality's index is adjusted to maintain an overall statewide local share of 45% and an overall state share of 55%. Much of our funding is derived from a per pupil cost multiplied by 1 minus the composite index. So the lower the composite index results in more state funding, while a higher composite index would result in less state funding. The LCI is supposed to be an indicator of the wealth of the locality. If it goes up, the locality is deemed to have increased wealth and will be able to provide additional funding to support its programs. The LCI is updated at the start of each biennium, and since our school division serves two localities, we have two LCIs. The city of Williamsburg's is .7217, and James City County's is .5331 for the current biennium. This chart is a historical view of the local composite index starting in 2005, '06 through 23, '04. Williamsburg was consistently at the highest LCI of .8 until 2017, when it started decreasing gradually each year. James City County's LCI has been more volatile and has fluctuated from .5998 in 2006, dropping to .5286 in 2009 at the beginning of the recession. It has been somewhat stable around .56 and decreasing to .5331 for the current biennium. This chart shows a comparison of our LCI with surrounding divisions. As you can see, Williamsburg and James City County have the highest LCI of any locality in our region. Unfortunately, that means fewer state dollars for our schools and an increased dependence on our local funding partners. Now we'll move into a review of enrollment information and the projection for next fiscal year. Enrollment is based on our September 30th student count each year. This is a historical look at our enrollment from fiscal year 2015 until now. We had a steady increase in enrollment through fiscal year 2018, then enrollment leveled off for a couple of years at approximately 11,450 prior to the COVID-19 pandemic. We saw a decline in enrollment in fiscal year '21 to 10,858 due to the pandemic, but we've increased for the past two years and are now back up to 11,308. Each year, Future Think prepares a 10-year enrollment projection based on our September 30th enrollment information. These projections include a low, moderate, most likely, and high projection. Next year's projection ranges from a low of 11,224 to a high of 11,537. For many years, we have used the low projection to develop our operating budget, but as we move into the fiscal year '24 budget cycle, we are planning again to develop the budget based on our current year enrollment as of September 30th. Enrollment is slowly recovering after the decline due to the pandemic, and we believe the most conservative approach is to budget based on the students that we currently have. As a reminder, these enrollment numbers do not include preschool students, which total approximately 395 each year. Moving into revenue, this will be a first look at our estimated state revenue based on Governor Yonkin's introduced budget. This is all preliminary information based on the governor's budget that could change based on action by the General Assembly. This table shows a comparison of our state revenue as presented in the governor's proposed budget and compared to our fiscal year '23 amended budget. Governor Yonkin's introduced budget includes the most recent estimates of sales tax revenue dedicated to public education. The estimates include both the 1% and the 1/8% portion that are appropriated for distribution to school divisions based on school age population. It is projected that we will see an increase of 770,000 in fiscal year '24 related to sales tax. Standards of Quality, or SOQ, funds have been updated based on the latest actual ADM and Fall Membership data. Also included is increased funding to expand the grade levels, funded to the fourth and fifth grades for reading specialists. Currently, state funding is for one reading specialist for 550 students in grades kindergarten through third grade. Incentive programs will see an increase of approximately 4 million. This is primarily due to funding for a 5% compensation supplement effective on July 1st, 2023, as well as a supplemental general fund payment from the state in lieu of the food and hygiene tax. The governor's budget also provides for the state's share of a one-time retention bonus payment for funded SOQ instructional and support positions. Local staff eligible for the bonus payment can be hired at any point during fiscal year 2023, but must also remain employed with the same school division in fiscal year 2024. Projected lottery amounts are being used to fund the state's share of various programs, such as the Infrastructure and Operations Per Pupil Fund, Early Reading Intervention, K-3 Primary Class Size Reduction, and SOL Algebra Readiness. We are estimating an increase of approximately 80,000 in this area as compared to our fiscal year '23 budget. Overall, we are looking at a total increase in state funding of approximately 5.7 million, or 9.1% over our current year budget. Before moving on to expenditures, I'd like to just pause and see if there are any questions at this point.
Any questions from any board members at the moment? Ms. Ortego?
How does, how does inflation affect the 9.1%?
I'm sorry?
How does inflation affect the 9.1% increase? Oh, sorry. How does inflation affect the 9.1% increase? Does it kind of neutralize it? More or less?
Yes. If you look at inflation currently, it's about 8%. Is that right? So we're, I guess, coming out equal if that's the case.
Before?
Yeah. I don't think the state budget accounts for any kind of inflation.
But...
But in theory, that's, that's the way it would look. Yeah. But it is a significant increase from the state. And most of it is for the 5% and the 1% bonus. I don't know, Ms. Ewing, if you want to mention the 1% bonus as a percentage of salary, and it's not like the bonuses we have given to our staff before of $1,000 to every single employee or 500 for part-time. Want to speak about how that bonus is different in the, in the governor's budget?
Sure. This bonus is a 1% on a person's salary. So a person making $20,000 is only going to receive a $200 bonus, whereas we've been paying, like Dr. Heron said, $1,000 flat bonus for full-time employees and 500 for part-time.
Which has really helped our, the staff who are paid the least.
I had a question on that 1% bonus. Who is that available to?
It's, the state funding is for funded SOQ instructional and support positions. And so that's who the state funding is for, and the employees have to be employed with us this fiscal year and return next fiscal year.
Okay.
So any new hires that aren't currently employed, any new people coming to us would not be eligible.
That's what I was getting to. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Unless we chose to do so and make up the funding.
Just wants to, and how can we choose to do so? Oh, you say, so you strut off there if we make it up?
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay. You strut off. Sorry. Ms. Hummel?
Yeah. My question was about the SOQ-funded position. So how many, just how many of our, our staff are, are outside of the SOQ funding? And then are we going to be for equity purposes?
We're, we're eligible for most of the money. And I know you've got a number with, and a bonus of this kind, you don't pay VRS on it. Is that right?
Correct. But bonuses, we aren't paying VRS. So the, it's further along in the presentation. But the, the bonus, if we were to give it to all employees, like we've been doing when we provide bonuses, it would cost approximately a million dollars. And I think the state funding was about 320,000.
Okay. So I just want everyone to realize that.
Yeah. So we're actually, but we would be budgeting for the 6% because in reality, that's what it is. Because the local, the local funders would have to fund most of it.
We'll let you continue, Ms. Ewing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to take a look at mandatory and essential operating expenditure increases. And Mr. Baker will start off with information regarding compensation and WJCC vacancy and trend information.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. We wanted to start with some information that we shared back in November with you with the starting salary of our neighboring school divisions for current bachelor's teachers, which is listed on the left-hand side of each grouping with the lighter shades, and then progressed to the right with a 5% increase for those beginning teachers. For the WJCC scenario, we show with each increasing darker shade, our salary would, what our salary would become if we were 1% more than the 5%, 2% more or 3% more than our neighboring school divisions. For the current school year, our bachelor's degree entry level is 50,000. And in this example, it could move up to $54,000. On this slide, we show the starting salary of our neighboring school divisions for the current master's teachers on the left-hand side of each grouping with the lighter shades and then progressed to the right with a 5% increase for those beginning teachers. For the WJCC scenario, we show with each increasing darker shade what the salary would become if it were 1% more, 2% more, or 3% more than our neighboring school divisions. For the current school year, our master's degree entry level is earning $51,681. And in this example, those teachers could move up to $55,815. We share these last two slides as a reminder of where we rank with our key competitors as we prepare to hire and retain teachers for the upcoming year.
I think we have a question, Mr. Baker.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Aller?
With that, if the other, and I know, I know we don't know, but are the other neighboring school districts also planning to do an increase? So if we increased, they would also be increasing, and so you wouldn't get as much of a differential.
Exactly.
Potentially. Right. I mean, this example is if, if our neighbors give 5%, and if we were per se, if we give more than that. But we do not know what our neighbors are doing.
We would assume that because of 5% coming from the state for SOQ-funded, that most divisions, almost all divisions, will at least do 5%. And some are already in conversations about doing more.
I, I have a question about this master's step. I understand, you know, I get the number as a start, where you start. How about somebody who's taught here for, I like two numbers. Somebody who's taught for five years with masters, somebody who's taught here for 10 years with a master's. Just to see, you know, we keep raising the starting salary. What impact does that have? How close, if somebody's been here for five years, how close is that salary to our beginning salary?
I apologize. That might be a scale over there. I can get that for you.
Yeah. So I'm, I...
Yeah. We tend to, those are the kind of questions that are very helpful because we tend to give a little bit more detail on where you would end up at various years at the next meeting. But yes, it's, it's really important.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Beers.
Mr. Baker, I'm looking at your presentation. You got quite a bit more, so we'll let you continue.
Sure. Thank you. Virginia school divisions are facing substantial challenges recruiting and retaining qualified teacher workforce. Divisions report that the pandemic has made it more difficult to recruit and retain teachers. Division leadership in nearly all Virginia divisions surveyed indicated it has become more difficult to recruit classroom teachers than it was before the pandemic. Statewide, the teacher workforce data shows that more teachers are leaving the profession while fewer teachers are becoming licensed for the first time. The number of newly licensed teachers for the 2021-22 school year was 15% below the pre-pandemic average. This year has been like no other in recent memory. We are seeing a new trend this year with teachers resigning and retiring during the school year. Our goal has always been to be 100% staff, and traditionally, we've hit that mark or come very close. But this year, we've seen an increase in our teacher vacancies each month with a low of 6 in September and then 14 in, in December. And as of today, that vacancy stands at 20 teacher vacancies. Hiring is not currently keeping pace with the resignations and retirements. Since September, we have hired 15 teachers, but we've had 26 resignations or retirements. Usually, teachers have resigned or retired at the end of a school year, but that is no longer the case. We are seeing more and more teachers leave in the middle of the school year. This means the hiring season never stops and is creating an instability in our classrooms.
Question?
Go ahead. Talk to Beers.
One of the reasons, I assume, is those who retire mid-year, they are able to get that additional bump from VRS. If you wait till the entire year, if you wait till June to retire or May to retire, you have to wait a whole another year before you get any of that increase. So from talking to older teachers who have retired, that's one of, that's one of the things that they, they say is they'll get that bump during that first year that they're retired and not have to wait a whole another year. Is that true?
It, it is true, but, but then it's still unusual. In the past, it never, it just not happened as much as happening now.
It just may be that more and more want to retire or decide they are going to retire. And it's like, yeah.
I think that is a...
And not quit in the middle of the year.
I think that is a factor. Yeah. It definitely is a factor, which is leading, teachers normally wait to the end of the year because they're, they're dedicated to their classrooms. There is a different trend.
Yeah.
And it's impacting us on a daily basis.
Yeah. That's why the long-term sub is critical.
Overall, in Virginia, the numbers of teachers leaving the profession rose substantially in the 2021-2022 school year. By that number, the number of teachers leaving the profession was 12% higher than the pre-pandemic yearly average. This growing gap between individuals leaving and entering the teaching profession help explains the increase in vacant teaching positions. Before the pandemic, there was about 800 vacant teaching positions statewide. This increased substantially to about 2,800 vacant teaching positions in October of 2021. More recently, VDOE collected data from 111 school divisions as of August of 2022. Those divisions were reporting a, an increase of 25% or 3,300 teacher vacancies increase from those from 2021. And this trend is happening in WJCC. Our yearly turnover trend matches and mirrors the state of Virginia. After decline, after declining during the first part of the pandemic, the numbers of teachers leaving rose substantially in the 2021-2022 school year. To dig a little deeper into the data for this past school year, we had 148 instructional staff resign or retire in 2022, and the year before, that number was 93. Within that 148 number, we had 33 retirees and 24 relocations. But an alarming figure is that 72, or almost half of those separations, were teachers in their first 10 years of service. Several of those teachers stated some of the reasons why they left were more money from a neighboring division, career change, leaving teaching for the private sector, relocation, staying at home, work-life balance, or they were just overwhelmed. This amount of teacher turnover makes it a challenge to maintain a culture of excellence. I hand it back to Renee.
I think we have some questions if we can for a moment. Ms. Hunley, do you have your hand up?
Yes.
Okay.
I just have a question. Teachers that just graduated from college, are they, have they already been hired by the divisions? Or are they still, could be eligible to be hired?
We're hiring teachers that are graduate, like December grads currently. Yes, ma'am. I'm not sure if that answered your question.
Yes. Thank you.
Ms. Young?
I, among those, I mean, you gave a lot of, a lot of reasons. When you said that they were leaving the profession, did they give what they were going to do after they left their profession?
Some do, some don't. Some go to the private sector, some are just taking time away and taking a break and, and reflecting on their life. And some, some are leaving the profession totally.
And they're, and they're leaving permanently?
Or they're leaving at the moment. Yes, ma'am.
Leaving at the moment.
Is salary, is that generally the most common reason that you hear? Are there other, other significant things that are, that they say?
It's, it's significant, I think. But the other ones are people that are relocating or work-life balance or, you know, people that are stay at home, raise a family. But, but salary is significant.
Any other questions or comments? Questions? Okay. Ms. Ewing?
So for WJCC, every 1% of salary increase costs the division approximately 1.2 million. And the governor's budget provides a 5% salary increase for funded SOQ instructional and support positions effective July 1st, 2023. This state support amounts to approximately 3.7 million. This chart shows the amount of local support needed from the localities to be able to provide a salary increase for all staff ranging from 5% to 10%. A 5% increase will require 2.2 million in local support, and a 10% salary increase would require 8.2 million in local funding. As we look at salary increases, we will want to consider our competitiveness for attracting and retaining staff. The governor's budget provides funding for a one-time, 1% retention bonus payment in fiscal year '24 for funded SOQ instructional and support positions on September 1st, 2023. Local staff eligible for the bonus payment can be hired at any point during fiscal year 2023, but must also remain employed with the same school division in fiscal year '24. School divisions may supplement the state funds with additional available funds to provide retention bonuses paid to other eligible instructional and support positions. A 1% bonus for all WJCC staff costs approximately 1 million. State funding would support approximately 320,000 of the cost, requiring 680,000 in local support. For the '23-24 school year, WJCC needs to add three school counselor FTEs to maintain our current level of service. The addition of three school counselors allows us to maintain the recommended ratio of 250 to 1 set by the American School Counseling Association. Additionally, this supports our ability to meet the Virginia State Code of providing 80% of counselor time in direct services to students. Based on our current class size target ratios at the elementary level, we will need to add an additional seven FTEs in order to maintain these class sizes next school year. And in order to maintain our adopted class size ratios for middle school, four additional teachers will be needed next year at an estimated cost of three hundred twenty thousand. As well as at the high school, an additional four teachers will be needed next year to maintain our adopted class size ratios.
Go ahead, Ms. Hummel.
So we just, we just are budgeting for population to be flat. So I guess my question is with a flat population of students, how come we have, what, twelve, thirteen additional FTEs in the budget?
We could take elementary, for example. Mr. Walker has literally broken it down. Basically, it means that we have numerous elementary school classrooms that are not meeting our current ratios, and the same for middle and high school. Mr. Walker, you want to give just a few examples of, of the detailed analysis? So this is just to maintain the status quo and actually get us back to our normal class size.
So as Dr. Heron shared, there are approximately seven to eight class grade levels across four of our elementary schools right now that have clearly exceeded our class size target ratios, which happens with transparency of students moving in or out. And in order to get us back in alignment with our ratios and our expectations, that's where the seven would be coming from. So currently, seven are over.
So we've been stretching our teachers at this point.
Yes, ma'am.
Over capacity in the classrooms. And so this, this kind of budget increase of FTEs helps in two ways. It relieves the, the stress that's on the teachers, perhaps the kind of stress that's leading them to leave our school division.
Correct, right.
Also, a better experience for our students, is that the.
For, in both cases, both, both are absolutely right. The other, the other piece of the puzzle is that we have actually allocated additional teachers to some of those classrooms and have not been able to hire them because they're not available. Because the year, the year started and no one is getting out of their current contract.
Ms. Swartigan?
Can you just help me understand, did we have these ratios, these target ratios in fiscal year, in, in the fourteen, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen school years?
These have been our class size ratios in the budget for many, many years. However, we did.
Go ahead. We updated to these ratios, was it in fiscal twenty-one?
Yes.
Twenty-one, twenty.
Yeah, I think it was in fiscal twenty-one, so back in fourteen, fifteen, I can get the information for you for what our class size targets were.
What, what prompted the, is it what Ms. Hummel just said? What prompted the change, what, what, what made us change our target from what it was before? Because we, we have had, and I know maybe it's, you know, how students are distributed now might be different, but our overall numbers have, have been higher, so we're, if, if, is it, I guess the answer is we had different targets at that time?
Is that the point where we were doing the per capita versus the free and reduced lunch? And the, the, that's, that's what I remember when I was serving on the board, there was a lot of discussion about that.
Yeah, we changed the ratios based on free and reduced lunch, and we actually, Mr. Walker has the details right behind me, I know.
Prior to the recession, back in years two thousand seven to two thousand ten, those were very similar class target ratios that we're aiming for right now, twenty, twenty-five, and twenty-five. So actually, we had higher students in grade three than what we're aiming for now. So it was prior to the recession, very similar class sized target ratios.
Recession in twenty oh eight?
Oh, eight?
Yes, so seven to ten.
But then I think the question is, what prompted the change in twenty-one?
Basically, free and reduced lunch populations, it was, it was an equity issue to try to put the schools that had higher free and reduced lunch populations give a lower class size ratio to, to meet the needs of, of students.
Okay, so we are, we're, so we are changing our ratio or from what it's been over the last couple of years?
It's actually, it has been like this since twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
That's right.
Yeah. Twenty-one, twenty-two, and now into twenty-three. Prior to that, at, at Matoka and Stonehouse and, and other schools with a, without, without a free and reduced lunch ratio that's high, we allowed our classes to go to twenty-eight and twenty-nine students in a classroom. And we don't have, so now we're all set at a, a target and trying to stick within that.
Okay.
So comparing budget to budget, the current year budget was built on eleven thousand eighteen students. And so now we're preparing to build next year's budget on our current enrollment of eleven thousand three oh eight, so an increase of two hundred ninety students, which would require additional teachers.
Which one was built on eleven thousand eighteen?
Current year, so the current budget was built on eleven thousand eighteen. So that's what the staffing, what's we budgeted for.
Because we got an additional two hundred and ninety students we weren't expecting.
Okay.
We were above the high projection at elementary.
And what we're operating on now is actual numbers, is that right?
Current, yes.
Yeah, and that's what we did last year, actual.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Ms. Young?
Right, Mr. Walker, which grade levels are we seeing? I mean, it might be across the board, and I recognize that, but which grade levels are being impacted most by the increase of enrollment?
It does range across the board, but specifically, it's kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and fourth grade at those four schools.
All right, any other questions before we kick it back to Ms. Yuen? Ms. Yuen?
Okay, Ms. Bourgeois is now going to join us to go over some special education staffing information.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. In order to provide context to the special education mandated needs, we will begin by looking at special education population trends. The numbers presented here represent students receiving special education services as documented on the December one state report, which is used to determine our state and federal funding for special education for the next fiscal year. The December one count for this year shows an increase of fifty-seven students. This increase raises the percentage of WJCC students receiving special education services to sixteen point nine percent. As compared to one local division in two comparably sized divisions, WJCC's percentage of students with a disability is the highest. While it's not possible to identify every data point that might impact the percentage of students with a disability who attend WJCC schools, there are two data points that can provide us with some information. First, this data shows the number of students who went through an initial eligibility and were determined to have a disability and require specially designed instruction over the past three years. The three-year trend data shows an increase in the number of students found eligible during the 2021-22 school year. And the data for this year is just through December sixteenth, 2022, so we're continuing to see an upward trend. A second data point is the number of students identified with a disability who transfer into WJCC schools with a current IEP. For the 2021-22 school year, there was a total of a hundred and seventy transfer students. For this school year, again, just through December sixteenth, there have been ninety-two transfer students, with the middle school and high school numbers showing an upward trend. While there is no data tool to accurately answer the question of why WJCC has a higher percentage of students receiving special education services, there is anecdotal information that families choose WJCC schools because of the quality of special education services provided. It is a priority for us to maintain these high-quality services while meeting the diverse needs of a growing student population. The growth in the number of students being served directly impacts this teacher and school caseloads. Virginia regulations and the Virginia Standards of Quality designated as SOQ on the chart above establish the maximum caseload staffing requirements for special education services for school-aged children. Caseload standards per teacher or school average per teacher is a maximum of twenty points except for classrooms serving students with autism or multiple disabilities for more than fifty percent of the day, where the class load maximum is only eight students. Looking at the caseload data for last year, there were eight individual teacher caseloads above SOQ maximum and ten caseloads at capacity. As we move to the data for this year, the number of caseloads above SOQ maximum has increased from eight to twelve, and the number of caseloads at SOQ capacity has increased from ten to twenty-six. These caseload numbers do adjust monthly based on revised IEPs requiring increased services as well as transfer in newly eligible students. The trend shows these factors will continue to impact the caseload capacity for our teachers. Our Department of Special Education monitors enrollment in caseloads on a monthly basis. Monitoring this year has resulted in readjusting positions and reallocating resources to ensure that we are providing appropriate programming for our students. The commitment and flexibility of our special education teachers and teacher assistants allows WJCC to continue providing quality education. Ultimately, the special education staffing needs continue to grow too. This year, the equivalent of one FTE was added to support specific reading program needs. And there has also been an increase of four paraprofessionals to be in compliance with individual student needs that are IEP mandated. I'll stop here for any questions before we continue.
Ms. Bourgeois? Ms. Hummel?
Just a short question, how, since you've got these numbers up until December of this year for transfers in, do you typically see a whole lot of variation after, very, with those numbers?
We, we will see some typically at the semester change. Um, it's, some of it's, you know, fluid throughout the year, but those tend to be smaller numbers. But semester change can bring a, an influx, but that would be the only other time during, at this point in the year.
Know that at the end of January, is that, yeah. Thanks.
I appreciated the anecdotal kind of explanation as to why, you know, our numbers are higher than some of our regional divisional, um, schools, schools. I think, I, I'm remembering a conversation, I think, that I had with you regarding military members and them being able to, if they had a family member that needed special services within the educational, within a school, that they could request a certain division or certain locality, is that accurate? How does that work?
They, they can ask for, for placement at a certain base. Based on neighboring school divisions, that's.
And then from that base, are they. Compassionate order, then from that base, are they able to request a certain school division?
The, the enrollment still requires that they live within that division. So they, they would look for, for housing in the division that they're, they're wanting to attend.
Do you know, are, are there a significant number of families that fit within that scope?
Specifically military, I mean, we, we haven't.
Just curious.
We haven't taken it down to that level, but we could probably look to see if we could find that number.
Ms. Young?
Right, can, can you tell me the caseload? I'm, I'm sure you can, but the caseload for a teacher that's doing self-contained? Do we have, we, we don't have that many self-contained classrooms, I don't think, but what is the average caseload for that?
I'm gonna let Dr. Brown, our director, give you some information on that.
Good afternoon. For a self-contained classroom, depending on the type of student population they're serving, if it's a classroom of students that have autism, it would be no more than eight in that classroom. You could go up to ten with a paraprofessional, where we, we have our max caseload at eight in those specific classrooms. If there's various categories, or that there are different disabilities with the paraprofessional, you could go up to twelve, we try to not go above that.
So like, for example, students with ED, would, they would go up to twelve?
They could, with the paraprofessional, we, we tried no more than ten. We do not have a classroom just with students with emotional disabilities that go beyond or go near that number.
Okay, and what about special ed teachers that are working with the inclusion model? What is the caseload for them?
So depending on the disability and the amount of services, if it's less than fifty percent of the day, and depending on the point structure, they could have a caseload of fourteen students, fifteen students, or a little bit be up, above, excuse me, depending on the current assignments.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, it's like actually a follow-up, you, you, you asked part of the question I, I had. I'm, I'm curious about, because I, there is a steady increase and I, you can't, it's just, it's what it is. I'm, I'm curious about how many of those students are in the inclusion classroom? And how many students are in a, for better, you know, some kind of a self-contained setting? Because I'm curious about, if that, if we continue to see that growth, where's the growth going to be in the inclusion or the other? And will that have an impact? I would assume it would have an impact on the need for space and for additional teachers and TAs. I probably asked about four.
That's okay. So with the December one report, I don't have it in front of me, but that actually breaks down all of that, including with the current number, the amount receiving percentage-wise, less, less than fifty, more than fifty, that could provide our current snapshot.
Because it is, it's, it's, it's very positive to see that we have a number of students that are, that are in inclusion classrooms and, and, but the demands for that more self-contained setting, I'm, I'm just interested in that.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Dr. Brown?
Thank you.
Just as a side note on that, our vacancies, our teacher vacancies, our twenty teacher vacancies, I think the largest percentage at the moment are special education teachers, that, of vacant positions.
So, sorry, so because you've got a, a lot of vacancies in that area, does that mean that we're tipped over the, sorry? But does the vacancy itself means that we're in danger of tipping over beyond that, those caps that you just discussed?
It, it can, yes. And so what we do within our department is when we see schools or case managers that go over a certain percentage point, we have to look at each school and potentially will reallocate case management to stay under that cap. But absolutely, with the vacancies, that does play a factor into it.
Would, would a student actually be moved?
No, no, not at all. And we've had to do some shifting to ensure that students are receiving the services based on various factors, so.
Thanks.
So it's very challenging right now, and literally a, a daily watch for Dr. Brown and his staff.
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
One of the most interesting things is, as our special population, education population increases, Ms. Yuen is going to look at the funding that we receive, the burden that's, that's of funding that, that continues to grow because of the, the number of students that we are serving well.
Part of our federal funding and our grants fund that we receive each year supports our special education population. This table shows our IDEA six eleven or six B grant award amount from 2019 through the current fiscal year, which supports a total of thirty-one FTEs. As you can see, the amount of funding really hasn't increased from year to year, yet we provide salary increases and benefit costs increase each year. We have reached the point where these grant funds cannot continue to sustain the number of positions that we have in the past. We anticipate transitioning three teaching positions from six B grant funds into the operating fund next year. This graph shows the five-year history of our special education expenditures and the funding source. The light green area of each column represents the amount of federal funding, which is approximately ten percent. The dark blue represents the amount of state funding, which is approximately twenty percent. And the purple represents the amount of local funding each year, which is approximately seventy percent. In addition to the three teaching positions that we will need to transition from our six B grant into the operating fund, five additional special education teachers are recommended in order to impact the caseload capacities that Ms. Bourgeois just spoke about. We also have four special education aides that are providing one-to-one assistance and are IEP mandated that we have hired in the current fiscal year that need to. That we have hired in the current fiscal year that need to be included in next year's budget.
Is this in addition to those other increases in the teacher FTEs that you?
At this time, we do not have information from New Horizons regarding cost for next year, so we are estimating a fifteen percent increase. This would include the five percent salary increase that is currently included in the governor's budget. Over the past five years, our costs have increased on average around five percent. And currently, at this point in the budget process, we are estimating a ten percent increase in our workers' comp, general liability, fleet and property insurances. Which amounts to approximately sixty-one thousand. And for our audit contract and risk management services provided by James City County, we are estimating a total increase of seven thousand one hundred fifty. Utility and fuel increases are something that we will need to plan for next year as well. We are estimated an increase of eighteen percent in this area at an estimated cost of six hundred thousand. Contractual increases for operations amount to approximately twenty-six thousand, which includes our radio maintenance agreement and ground services. With James City County, as well as the annual increase for our storage facility. Beginning last school year, we started contracting out some of our transportation services due to the number of driver vacancies. Which was partially paid with grant funds. We anticipate the continued need for these services and propose starting to build the funding into our operating budget with an initial amount of two hundred fifty thousand. Transportation's fleet management system is vital to our operation as it manages all vehicles, equipment, fuel and fleet parts owned by WJCC. The current system is in need of replacement and we are currently working on a joint procurement with James City County. At this time, the estimated cost for the replacement is one hundred twenty-four thousand. Before Mr. Baker shares information with health insurance, we will take a pause.
Miss Young.
Can we, I mean, can we get back one slide?
Sure.
Okay, when you talk about increases, that is six hundred thousand dollars above what we're currently paying? Okay, um, it would help me if I knew what we were currently paying. Because when I look at six hundred thousand, that doesn't sound astronomical, but it's in addition to what we're paying, so. For our radio maintenance is twenty-six thousand in addition to what we're currently paying, that's, that's, I've got it right?
Yes, ma'am, I, we can get that information for you.
Okay, thank you.
Miss Hummel?
And then the system change is. I'm trying to think why that isn't in the CIP, so it is a hundred and twenty-four thousand of some kind of a.
Software.
Software programming fee that we have to pay, or is it in? Uh, like, why isn't that considered CIP?
Mr. Snipes, Mr. Landers, between the two, to explain the need for the system.
Uh, the CIP includes things like infrastructure improvements, um, it does not include for servers and software.
Okay, so that's, that's where we draw the line for servers and soft- software's operational?
And apparently, we've been using an antiquated system for a number of years that is past its useful life. And that's what the new fleet management system is, and if someone would like to maybe explain to the board what we're talking about and why it's necessary, that'd be great.
Uh, yes, ma'am, so we've had the existing system for a number of years, uh. My initial guess would be ten plus years, a dozen plus years, I'm not sure.
Since the nineteen nineties.
So that system is at end of life, and like every other software development uh vendor out there, they are moving to cloud-based systems. So that it's more ea- more easy for them to apply patches and security features and all that. So this would move us to a subscription-based model to be able to continue using that new software.
So to Ms. Young's point, is, what are we paying now for this? Or is this just a hun- a a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars more than?
More than zero.
Yeah.
It's above zero at this point.
We, uh, last year we paid about five thousand dollars for the service.
Would would this be annually then, if it was, if it's a subscription?
If it's a subscription base, yes, ma'am.
Four hundred twenty-four every year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that was my question.
And perhaps the fleet management want to just talk a little bit about what that does and why it's essential for operations?
Well, the fleet management system allows us to know our mileage, it allows us to be able to track where our buses are, it allows us to be able to. Uh, Billy to be, uh, shop for him and to be able to order supplies and equipment, so it is, it is. It is vital to the way we use our data and to be able to order, um, and to maintain our fleet.
Is it also a routing system?
No, no, but it does allow, it does, when I say know where our buses are, it, um, it allows, that that was a forty slip. It allows us to know exactly how many miles our buses have driven, it it keeps track of those kind of things for us.
And and this is just, like, we, you're, so you're doing that with James City County?
Currently.
Procurement, RFP, like, you know.
Currently, they're also, they were also looking for a system, so we are in contact with the county on an RFP. Um, which should be going out shortly. And this, that a hundred twenty-four thousand may go up or go down, again, that was the initial estimate.
Yeah, and if I could, if I could just clarify my earlier statement that it would be a hundred twenty-four every year, I have not seen the contract myself. So part of that could be one-time implementation fees that I'm not aware of.
So we would hope to have a little bit more information surrounding that before we'd actually include it in the, in the actual budget.
Miss Young.
Yeah, what is the difference between the ever-driven contract and the fleet management system, I mean, those are two transportation. Services, but what is the ever-driven contract, that's our contracted. Individual buses and the drivers and.
If you recall, we contracted with what they were called, used to be called ALC.
Right.
For transporting our students, now they've changed their, uh, name to ever-driven.
But that's the two hundred fifty thousand dollars is in addition to what we're currently paying?
They're now starting to add that to the budget because we, we understand that, well, let me go back and answer your question. The two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is in addition to what we are currently paying. Because we want to begin to add to the budget, we know that next year, Rena, you want to explain how the money is going next year?
So because of all the driver vacancies, we utilize salary and benefit funding to support the contract. And we also utilize grant funds, the grant funds are going to expire in September twenty twenty-four. We believe we still need to continue using these services to some extent, so we're planning to start building this into the operating budget. In hopes that we'll be able to fill some vacancies and keep that money and salaries, but we're gonna need some money to support this contract.
So we've used ARP funds for, SRF funds for two years now for the contract, which has been great to have that as a resource.
We're losing those in September.
September twenty-four.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for all those explanations, I'll let you continue, Miss Young.
Mr. Baker is now gonna share some information regarding healthcare.
Good afternoon, this slide has information regarding our two hundred fifty-dollar deductible plan and is our most popular plan among our employees. And please know, when we compare this plan to our five hundred-dollar deductible plan or a high deductible plan. It does not cost the division any more money when somebody chooses this two hundred fifty-dollar deductible plan, cause the employee pays that difference. On this plan, the employee is paying, for employee only, they're paying a hundred ninety-eight dollars a month or twenty-two percent of the cost. And the employee plus spouse, the employee is paying five hundred and fifty-six dollars a month or thirty-five percent of the cost. And the employee plus family, the employee is paying seven hundred and seventy-five dollars a month or thirty-two percent of the cost. The division offers several different health insurance options for our staff, and here's the current cost share for our five hundred-dollar deductible options. On this plan for employee only, the employee is paying a hundred and six dollars a month or about fourteen percent of the cost. And for employee plus spouse, they're paying three hundred and eighty-six dollars a month or about twenty-seven percent of the cost. And for employee plus family, the employee is paying five hundred and eight dollars a month or about twenty-two percent of the cost. We also have the opportunity for a high deductible health plan, but we don't have as many employees choosing this plan, cause for not much more money. They can get into the five hundred-dollar deductible plan. We're using an estimate of ten percent and fifteen percent as we prepare our health insurance renewal, we hope to have the final numbers for you. At our next budget workshop. Currently, the division is paying seventy-four point seven percent of the cost and employees are paying twenty-five point three percent of the cost. As a reminder, not all employees participate in our health insurance program. You know, one thousand three hundred and twenty-six of, out of the one thousand nine hundred and eighty-one eligible employees participate, which is sixty-seven percent. That means that the health insurance differs from a pay raise, please know, if you give a pay raise, it impacts all employees and it also assists in their retirement. On this last slide, we continue with the fifteen percent increase and how different cost-sharing scenarios would impact the budget. This slide shows various cost-sharing scenarios for a health insurance increase between the employee and WJCC. For example, if WJCC were absorb a hundred percent of a fifteen percent increase, that would increase the budget. Three million, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. We also show a thirty-seventy share as well as a sixty-forty share for both the fifteen percent increase. And a ten percent increase. Be happy to answer any questions before we hand it back to the CFO.
Why did we decide last year on that, did we go with the seventy-thirty when when it increased last year?
It was either the lottery, eighty-twenty, but we'll confirm that for you.
I thought it was eighty-twenty, but.
I think it was eighty-twenty as well, so we'll, we'll confirm that for you with the actual cost involved.
Okay, cause I'm, I mean, there was a lot of discussion about that last year and we came to the conclusion for the eighty-twenty, I think, I think. And then, so maybe add that as one of our options.
Can we do that at the eighty-twenty as an option?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker, before we continue, I missed Ms. Hundley, if you're there, I think Ms. Hundley had a special education question. Are you there, Ms. Hundley?
Yes, I'm sorry, I, yes, I'm here, I tried to jump in.
Sorry about that.
I have a question, you know, whereas on project we're doing, we're doing an awesome job. How are we, and, okay, so with more increases in students possibly and. Um, less teachers possibly or resigning and having such a big, um, vacancy with Fed, how are we with compliance and. Um, possible legal issues that may come up, does the state give us some type of grace? Something if we, if we don't have enough support, I I just, that worries me a little bit.
Thank you for your question, Ms. Hundley, um, that is, uh, there, there is no grace, there is no waiver process. That's where we're having to work, um, and look at, at each individual school to make sure that we're maintaining that. Um, and and Dr. Brown referenced some of that as far as caseload adjustments. Um, as an example, you know, we have self-contained teachers where some of their, their numbers and their points may be lower. So they may, may be taking on some caseload management for inclusion students and and. Um, it's, it's a good example of how our special education departments work so collaboratively to make sure that we are meeting. All of the individual needs as, as designated on their IEPs. Uh, we are, are looking at, uh, we have some retired teachers that are helping with caseload management. So that our teachers that are in the building can be focusing on the instructional minutes. Uh, we are, um, looking, we have, uh, one or two teachers that are certified as special education teachers. Have previous special education experience, um, are teaching, have regular general education teaching assignments for this year. But are, are managing some of our caseloads, so, so basically, we're looking everywhere we can to make sure that we are staying within compliance.
Thank you very much.
Miss Bujua. Dr. Harren.
Although, Ms. Ewan will go to the final wrap-up on the, the summary.
So at this point, I'd like to just summarize everything we've discussed this afternoon. Our preliminary state revenue increase as compared to our fiscal year twenty-three amended budget. And based on the governor's introduced budget is five million, seven hundred thirty-five thousand, twenty-seven dollars. As we look at a summary of the expenditures that we've gone through this afternoon. The cost of a salary increase is approximately one point two million for each percentage increase. A five percent increase is included in the governor's budget, so that would cost us approximately six million. Um, we are showing the range of an increase here on this slide from five percent to an eight percent salary increase. So an eight percent salary increase would cost approximately nine point six million. The cost for the one percent retention bonus if, to provide to all WJCC staff would cost approximately one million. Increased cost for health insurance based on a fifteen percent overall increase. And with the division fully covering that cost is approximately three point five million. Essential increases in FTEs for school counselors and teachers based on our target class size ratios is one point four million. Mandatory increases in FTEs for special education teachers is approximately six hundred forty thousand. And essential FTEs for special education aides is approximately one hundred forty thousand. Contractual services increases amount to approximately five hundred thousand. And estimated increases for workers' compensation, general liability and property insurances is approximately sixty-one thousand. The estimated increase for New Horizons is three hundred ten thousand and utilities and fuel is six hundred thousand. These preliminary mandated and essential expenditure increases amount to between fourteen point two million. And seventeen point eight million, depending on compensation increases and health insurance increases. And the preliminary state revenue increase totals approximately five point seven million. So with only those expenditure increases discussed this afternoon, we're looking at a shortfall of approximately eight point five million. To twelve point one million. And as a reminder, this revenue only includes the anticipated increase in state revenue based on the governor's introduced budget. And does not include any increase from the localities at this point. As a point of reference, this chart represents our local revenue for the past ten years. Years with an asterisk indicate the first year of a biennium. Fiscal year nineteen has a higher increase as that is the year that James Blair opened, so we've not factored that year into the average increase information. That is presented. Percentage increase over these years, not including fiscal year nineteen, has ranged from a low of one point six percent. To a high of three point five percent with the average being two point three percent.
And the reason we don't include two thousand nineteen is because it was, uh, six point six when we opened a new school. There's, there's additional expenses and it's not a regular, uh, increase.
This chart shows what various locality increases would amount to, ranging from one and a half percent at one point five million. To a five percent increase at four point nine million over our fiscal year twenty-three budget. And for comparison purposes, this chart shows for the past ten years, the percentage increase each year for both our local revenue. Represented by the green line and the state revenue represented by the blue line. For most years, our local revenue has been around two percent with a few exceptions, most notable in fiscal year nineteen when James Blair opened. Again, this is a preliminary look at our state revenue based on the governor's introduced budget. This information will change in the coming weeks as the General Assembly convenes and takes action. We have also only reviewed mandatory and essential cost increases this afternoon. There are other cost increases and potential savings that will be reviewed at the January seventeenth budget work session. Upcoming dates in the budget process include a budget work session and pre-budget public hearing on January seventeenth. Presentation of the superintendent's proposed budget on February twenty-first. A public hearing on March seventh, and there will be a joint budget work session with our funding partners on March seventeenth. With anticipated board approval on March twenty-first in order to submit our budget request to the localities by April first. in order to submit our budget request to the localities by April first. And that concludes our presentation and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Ewan and Dr. Heron. May I ask a question? No, I'll let you guys go first, Ms. Donner.
I'm curious about the, and I should have asked this earlier, on the increase in the salaries. And so I saw that it was modeled out up to eight percent. I know there's been a lot of advocacy for up to the ten percent, so I was just curious about the decision to cap it at eight and not model out to the ten.
I think we provided the information on what a ten percent increase would be on one of the slides.
Four point nine. Five percent or four point nine, but the twelve one is at eight percent, is that right?
That's correct.
Seems like it should be modeled up to ten.
Which we certainly can do, and I think we've provided that. I'm just looking back for the slide. If you can find it for me, we have given a cost estimate on that one as part of the presentation as well.
I don't know if, it's my page number twenty-two. I don't know if it's slide number twenty-two on compensation.
I think that's right, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we've provided the chart for what a five percent through a ten percent salary increase would cost.
So we put it in the mix but haven't highlighted it because we're still waiting for some input from the board as to where they feel they would be comfortable landing.
With that, can I, is it within the, are you also incorporating at that ten percent the one percent retention bonus?
It's a separate cost, it's separate.
That's just kind of in my mind, I'm sitting here going, the ten percent figure is because of retention. So it could, in my mind, be nine percent with one percent would equal ten percent, but.
And I think the challenge with that is the bonus is a one-year thing. However, it's still, we can't use the state money towards a real percentage, so it would be nine percent plus one percent bonus.
I thought the one percent was going into their salary.
It's a one-time.
One-time.
So it's a one-time retention bonus payment?
So it's a bonus rather than an actual increase in salary, one percent of a person's salary.
And how does that affect the step?
It's a one-time payment. Doesn't affect retirement, doesn't affect anything. In fact, we don't charge VRS on it because it doesn't impact retirement. It's literally a bonus.
Ms. Young.
Which I really resent as a person. I did want to ask, going back, I mean, if we give a five percent raise, it's going to cost the division six million dollars. Did I understand that right? So what is the five percent that we're getting from the state? If the state is giving us a five, if giving teachers a five percent raise, I mean, why is that impacting us?
Well, the six, the five percent costs six million, but the state revenue only provides for SOQ-funded positions.
Only SOQ, that was the other thing I had on here.
So one, two, three, four and five, there's still a percentage will be locally funded.
Right, because we would want to give everybody the raise then.
And because of our high, our LCI, we don't get as much state money as anyone else.
Right, but then my other question is that's five percent a year of the biennium. Is that correct? Because a lot of times they say five percent and then they split it to two and a half.
Yeah, we got five percent in the first year of the biennium and this is the second five percent that was in Governor Northam's budget.
Okay, so. So those numbers that were stacked across on that slide, that's money that Williamsburg and James City County would have to fund in order for us to have like the five percent, the six percent, the seven percent on that slide.
Correct, correct. And Governor Youngkin kept the five percent in his amended budget and then added the one percent bonus.
As the board continues to look at this and consider the increase from the localities, can you offer the board, I guess maybe through SBQ, what that looks out through, it looks like through ten percent, that extra five for that particular slide? I think it'd be helpful.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? I'm sure they're out there. The eighty-twenty and that portion of this presentation, do we know or can you offer some kind of ideas to, you know, if there was an eight percent of five plus three or even a five plus five and then a seventy-thirty split? What the actual benefit is to the, I shouldn't say benefit, but the actual revenue for the employee, what the benefit is in salary? Do you have that available or can we have that?
Yeah, I think at the second meeting, we tend to go into that a little bit more detail and show if the system paid a hundred percent of the health insurance, they get the full salary raise. If we pay eighty percent and the employee takes on twenty percent, we show the impact of that through a average salary of a teacher, an average salary of a support staff member. So we will do that again at the next meeting to show you the impact on the individual employee.
I went back and looked and I believe it was twenty-eighty last year, not eighty-twenty. So division employee, so it was twenty division, eighty employee. The other piece of this is that right now we've got placeholders in at ten and fifteen percent in terms of the renewal rate. Last year, the renewal rate came in a little bit lower and we were able to come back to you and give you a five percent indicator in terms of that. So we're hopeful that renewal rate continues to come back. Last year, we presented that information the first part of February. So we will endeavor to have some additional data for you at the second meeting in January, but just time-wise, sometimes it's more challenging for us to get those renewal rates locked in in a finite fashion.
And so for this proposal, we're looking at the division taking on the crux of the cost versus what we did last year.
We really were just giving some examples of what it would look like. So for example, if the division didn't take on a hundred percent of a fifteen percent raise, there's three and three point five million dollars that could go towards the salary increase. So it's where is the best place to put potential money to benefit our employees?
That was our rationale.
Yeah. And I think as we're kind of winding down, I'm not seeing any questions.
Just a big question and there might, there might not be a good answer tonight, but just as we're moving forward through this budget process, what, Dr. Heron, do you think is, if you could identify, if you had to identify a magic bullet, what solves our, most likely to solve our retention and recruiting problem? Is it ten percent? Or are we going to, even if we did that, would we still see attrition because of other things that were, that Mr. Baker mentioned?
Yeah, I think there's some things that we've absolutely no control over. Movement from the area, retirement, exhaustion and some other things. However, I think the key is last year, we went in two percent above what we thought other people were doing. The key is to end up ahead of other school divisions in the percentage raise so that we actually compensate and try to keep our employees. I think we do a lot of other things to keep them too. I think we've got a great climate. I think we're doing our best. We're going to actually make a move hopefully in discussion later on tonight to help with subs in the classroom. We're constantly trying to support our teachers and staff across the system, but retention is a huge factor. I don't think there's a silver bullet, but I think money helps.
Dr. Biers.
Yeah, it's kind of a follow-up to that is, you know, we have that Capitol Conference on the thirtieth of January. And I'm just wondering, rather than, you know, try to cover the waterfront with them, if there's, if there is one or two things in the budget that if we really could, if we could focus on that and demonstrate the real need for that, I don't know. Maybe we might have an impact on our representatives. I don't know. I mean, I always wonder, why are we doing this? Taking our time out to go up and talk and I don't always see what the concrete results are going to be. But I just think it's more difficult to do that if you sort of walk in with everything. But if you could identify one or two really key areas that if we could get them to say, you know, you really should get that.
And actually, I think it's a great idea. And Dr. Biers, we're actually working on a handout, Ms. Wall and her staff are working on one right now to identify those two or three things. One is a greater salary increase than five percent. Governor Youngkin has put an extra percent as a bonus. Could we get the General Assembly to turn that into a real percentage? That would help us in the overall funding to move up in the increase for teachers. We're certainly going to focus on the support cap and the removal of that because we have a large number of aides and other staff across our system that we don't get funding for that are not in the SOQ. So if we were to have that removed, they removed some of that for the first time last year for years. And I think there's a slight willingness to go there if we were to push on that. So there's definitely some things that I think we can advocate for and this is the year to do that, both at the General Assembly and locally as well. Very challenging year when we usually are conservative in approach, but I'm not sure if that's how we can be this year if we're going to keep the system that we have.
And Dr. Biers, we have an opportunity to do that. I think Ms. Aller just shored up all of our legislators for a meeting such as what we did last year and what we're going to do this year based on feedback that we got at our last joint meeting, excuse me, is that we're going to be inviting, inviting our counterparts at the city and the county to join us via that Zoom.
We've done that, yeah.
Anything else? A lot of information here. I'm sure there's going to be some good discussions over the next few weeks. And I appreciate all your hard work and Ms. Ewan, you as well, and all of your staff for presenting this afternoon, moving into evening. So thank you. Last questions before we adjourn, Ms. Hummel? Do you have the last one?
Yes. Macro question, one of the things, and it could be like an SBQ, but broad scope. I'm looking at these SRA funds and I'm wondering when they are going away and like, what's the big chunk? What are the, where are we exposed at what point next year? I'm assuming that they go away when, in what month do they go away?
September of twenty twenty-four.
So September twenty twenty-four, and what have we come to rely on and now almost see as a required expense that we've been using SRA funds for? So that.
Yeah, we do have a little bit of information which will come at the next meeting. We have several positions that we put into SRA funds. We brought some of those into the operating budget last year and we plan to bring some in this year. For example, our math interventionist at the elementary school. Also, we will fund again for the next year out of SRA funds our permanent subs in every school that we couldn't survive without right now. But in September twenty-four, we will no longer be funding those out of SRA funds and we'll have to do an analysis of how to meet the needs of the school through the regular budget. So there's several things we have come to rely on, but we've been careful to stage them, to bring them back into the operating budget. This is a particularly challenging year to do that. I think it's important to do it.
Great question, thank you, Ms. Hummel. All right, I said that was the last one, but we don't need to rush off. Okay, so we'll adjourn. We're going to have our closed session as stated at six and then move into our work session where we have our organizational meeting. All right, this meeting's adjourned. Alright, this meeting's adjourned.
And as I do, once again, I'd like to welcome Ms. Donner to the school board. This is our first board meeting. Just want to say thank you for throwing your hat into the ring and supporting your, representing your, your community in Williamsburg. In December, we had to say a reluctant goodbye to Ms. Ms. Cook, but in a few short moments that we've been able to engage with you and get to know you. I know her seat's in good hands. So, thank you for being here, Ms. Donner.
Thank you.
I have a board member certify closed session for us, item three point two.
I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Young, Ms. Aller.
Ms. Hummel. Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortega.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye, thank you. And if I can have a motion to approve the agenda as presented this evening.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Any discussion on the agenda? Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortega.
Aye.
And Mr. Dowell.
Aye. All right, thank you. All right, it's at this point in the meeting that we'll move on to the organization of the board, and at that time, I'll pass the gavel on to Dr. Herron to serve as temporary chair. Dr. Herron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We start with four point oh one appointment of chair. In accordance with the Code of Virginia, the board must elect one of its members as chair. May I have a nomination for chair of the school board to serve for the calendar year twenty twenty-three?
Uh, Dr. Herron, I nominate Greg Dowell to serve as chair of the Williamsburg James City County School Board for the twenty twenty-three's calendar year.
Mr. Dowell has been nominated. Are there any further nominations? Without objections, nominations are closed. May I have a motion to approve Mr. Dowell as chair?
Well, Mr. Chair, I mean, um, Dr. Herron, I move to appoint Mr. Dowell as chair of the Williamsburg James City County School Board for the twenty twenty-three calendar year.
Could I have a second? Ms. Aller, please take the vote.
Mrs. Young.
Yes.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortega.
Aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Dowell. You are again chair of the school board for the twenty twenty-three school year.
Thank you, Dr. Herron, and thank you to my colleagues for your vote of support. It's, it really is an honor to, to serve. Thank you. Item four point two, appointment of the vice chair. May I have nominations for a vice chair of the school board to serve for calendar year twenty twenty-three?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I nominate Sarah Ortega to serve as vice chair of the Williamsburg James City County School Board for the twenty twenty-three calendar year.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Uh, Ms. Ortega has been nominated. Are there further nominations? Without objection, nominations are closed. May I have a motion to appoint Ms. Ortega as vice chair?
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Sarah Ortega as, sorry, as vice chair of the Williamsburg James City County School Board for the twenty twenty-three calendar year.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Aller?
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Orte- Mrs. Ortega.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Congratulations, Ms. Ortega. Thank you for being willing. No, Ms. Hunley, you only get one vote. All right.
I'm sorry. I just didn't know if y'all could hear me. I'm sorry.
Oh, you're good. You're good. Thank you. All right. Item four three, appointment of the parliamentarian. May I have nominations for parliamentarian of the school board to serve for calendar year twenty twenty-three?
Mr. Chair, I nominate Dr. Jim Beers to serve as parliamentarian of the Williamsburg James City County School Board for the twenty twenty-three calendar year.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Is there, um, excuse me. Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Dr. Beers has been nominated. Are there further nominations? All right, hearing none, may I have a motion to appoint Dr. Beers as parliamentarian?
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Dr. Jim Beers as parliamentarian of the Williamsburg James City County School Board for the twenty twenty-three's calendar year.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Young? Ms. Aller?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortega.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
And Mr. Dowell.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. You've got a big task in front of you to keep us straight and big shoes to fill for Ms. Hummel. Ms. Hummel, thank you for serving as parliamentarian last year. I appreciate you. Okay. Item four four, appointment of the clerk and deputy clerk. In accordance with section twenty-two dot one dash seven six of the Code of Virginia, it is recommended that Ms. Beth Aller be appointed clerk and Ms. Starr Robinson be appointed deputy clerk of the Williamsburg James City County School Board through twenty twenty-three. May I have a motion to that end?
Yeah, and, Mr. Chair, I move that the school board appoint Ms. Beth Aller as clerk and Ms. Starr Robinson as deputy clerk of the Williamsburg James City County School Board for calendar year twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ortega? Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Young.
Definitely, yes. She gets my chicken right. Thank you.
It's my chicken.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortega.
Aye.
And Mr. Dowell.
Aye. All right. I'm gonna move on to that. I'm so tempted, but I'm not gonna say it. Item four five, appointment of superintendents designated. In accordance with section twenty-two dot one dash seven six of the Code of Virginia, it is recommended that Mr. Daniel Kiefer, chief operating officer, be designated to attend meetings in the school board, of the school board in the absence or inability of the superintendent to attend through twenty twenty-three. May I have a motion to that end?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move that the school board appoint, uh, Dr. Daniel Kiefer, Mr. Daniel, Mr. Daniel Kiefer, I'm, I'm promoting him, um, chief operating officer to serve as the superintendent is designated for calendar year twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Ms. Donner. Okay, you threw your voice. Ms. Donner, thank you. Um, Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Young.
Yes.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortega.
Aye.
And Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Kiefer and Ms. Aller. Thank you for your work, too.
You're welcome.
Item four six, appointment of the school board members to advisory standing committees. Prior to the organizational meeting, board members volunteered for committee appointments and are best, are being nominated for the following advisory standing committees. Ms. Donner to the Twenty First Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee, Ms. Hunley to the Special Education Advisory Committee, Ms. Hunley and Ms. Donner to the Student Advisory Committee, Ms. Young and Ms. Hummel to the Policy Committee, and myself, Mr. Dowell and Ms. Ortega to the School Liaison Committee. Is there any further discussion or nominations? Hearing none, and without objection, nominations are closed. May I have a motion to approve the committee appointments as presented?
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Mrs. Donner to serve on the Twenty First Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee, Mrs. Hunley to serve on the Special Education Advisory Committee, Mrs. Hunley and Mrs. Donner to serve on the Student Advisory Committee, Ms. Mrs. Young and Ms. Hummel to serve on the Policy Committee, and Mr. Dowell and Ms. Ortega to serve on the School Liaison Committee for calendar year twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Ms. Ortega. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel, and Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Ortega.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Miss, uh, excuse me, Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel. Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
And Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Item four seven, appointment of the school board member to serve on the New Horizons Board of Trustees. Uh, may I have a nomination for a member to serve on the New Horizons Board of Trustees?
Mr. Chair, I nominate Ms. Young to serve on the New Horizons Board of Trustees for calendar year twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. Uh, Ms. Young has been nominated. Are there further, further nominations? Without objection, nominations are closed. Uh, may I have a motion to appoint Ms. Young to serve as trustee?
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Ms. Young to serve on the New Horizons Board of Trustees for the calendar year twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ortega. Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortega.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
And Mr. Dowell.
Aye. All right. Uh, item four eight, appointment of school board member to serve on the H R E T A Educational Advisory Committee. Uh, may I have a nominations, W H R O may have nominations for a member to serve on the Hampton Roads Educational Telecommunications Association Educational Advisory Committee. I prefer W H R O next.
Mr. Chair, I nominate Dr. Jim Beers to serve on the H R E T A Educational Advisory Committee for calendar year twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Is, uh, there, are there any other nominations for this appointment? Uh, without objection, nominations are closed. Uh, can I have a motion to appoint Dr. Beers to serve on the committee?
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Dr. Jim Beers to serve on the H R E T A Educational Advisory Committee for calendar year twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ortega and Ms. Aller.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortega.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
And Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Uh, item four nine, approval of regular school board meeting dates for twenty twenty-three. The State Code of Virginia, section twenty-two dot one dash seven two reads, "Each school board shall hold its annual organizational meeting for the purpose of establishing its regular meeting schedule for the ensuing year." May I have a motion to approve the calendar?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the regular school board meeting dates for twenty twenty-three as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Young, thank you. And Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortega.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Thank you all. And before moving on to announcements and superintendent report, I'd like to also acknowledge Ms. Hummel and her, um, dedication to the Williamsburg James City County Schools Foundation Board. Um, that board position is not appointed. Uh, it's very important to note that Ms. Hummel has done so on the board and that she will participate again as the representative in the calendar year twenty twenty-three. So, thank you for your dedication and commitment to that board. It's, it's fabulous what they've, uh, committed to in this last year and their, their support for the schools. Thank you. All right, so we're gonna move on to item five one, announcements and superintendent's report. Dr. Herron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to begin by wishing our staff, families, and community a happy new year. I hope everyone had a relaxing and enjoyable winter break, and we're excited to be back together again and have, and the year as well underway. At the end of this month, we're looking forward to hosting a job fair at Lafayette High School. Administrators will conduct onsite interviews for current vacancies for the school year and positions for next school year. Employment offers may be made on the spot for well-qualified candidates. We're looking for teachers, teacher aides, custodial staff, bus drivers, and every position in between to support our students. You or someone you know has ever considered a career in schools, even career switchers without current education, educational experience, please join us on January twenty-seventh at Lafayette to learn more about opportunities at W J C C schools. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my own items for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Herron. Are there any, uh, reports from the board? Any board member? Okay, we'll move on to our, uh, public comment for the evening. Item six one, Dr. Beers.
It, it is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. The citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk to start up tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. It is the board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, citizens are asked not to engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other demonstration, any other kind of demonstration during the presentation. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the board requests that all speakers refrain from reference to specific individuals. Though the board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated one minute and thirty seconds to make their presentation, and the board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My directions are concluded.
Thank you, Dr. Beers.
And we have one speaker tonight, Anne Marie Smith.
Hey, good evening. Um, I wish to commend the board and the administration for including item seven point oh eight, review of textbook selection on the agenda. After a thorough review of the textbook selection process last year, I respectfully request that you add the following review and adoption processes before proceeding with its approval. Number one, define specifically the point scoring system and how points are totaled and averaged. Make this available to the public and have handouts at the evening textbook adoption fair and on hand with each book at the central office so that the public understands how the point scoring works and will be incorporated. Number two, define whether the same questions are given to the public as are to the committee for the point scoring. Number three, define exactly how public point scores are incorporated into the overall point totals. Specifically, what percentage are the public point scores weighted versus committee point scores in the final evaluation? Number four, define how public additional written comments can be included beyond point scores. Number five, define that all committee members must submit a full and complete review of every book. Failure to do so will disqualify the committee member and remove all their reviews. It is only with equal review of all books can a reviewer sincerely understand which book is best. At a, number six, at a school board review presentation, I looked at your calendar, before the February twenty-first or twenty-third final selection meeting, all data scores, tallies, et cetera, should be made available to the school board members at this meeting for review and questions. Number seven, define that all supporting materials include raw data spreadsheets and be free of, put available free of charge to the public at least one week prior to the final recommendation meeting. I only have one more sentence. Um, on item four point oh eight on the WHO, the W R H O, um, I'd ask the board actually review the membership and remove themselves from this organization and use any money, time, and expense, um, of this membership, be moved to the, uh, teacher pay raises.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Ms., uh, Aller will take that. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you all for, uh, uh, thank, uh, our public comment, uh, this evening. Uh, we're gonna move on to item seven, item seven one, our proposed agenda items. Uh, item seven one, review V S B A Code of Conduct for school board members. Just, just, name it. Okay. All right. So, well, you've got, uh, the V S B A Code of Conduct and your executive content there, uh, speaking to our board members, and this is an annual review. Uh, speaking to our board members and this is an annual review, um, and let me just ask Ms., uh, Aller, when we need to have this back to you. Is that our next meeting? That this is signed and we sign it, um, at the next meeting? Okay, alright. So, I would just ask that, uh, our Board take a look at this over the next two weeks. Uh, it, I don't imagine it's changed too much since, uh, the last time we've looked at this. And if you have any grievances with anything that you see, uh, let me know and we'll have a discussion and see, uh, uh, if there are things that need to be worked out before we bring this to a conclusion at our next meeting.
Did we change anything?
I don't believe so. No. No. But we do have a new board member. Yep.
Oh, so we changed that one name. Okay.
Yeah. Ms. Donner might have some keen insight that we need to consider. So, we're open to your suggestions, Ms. Donner. Alright, we're gonna move on to item seven two, review request to purchase seven school buses from Sunny Merriman, Inc. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Snipes is going to introduce, um, this item and the following one with regard to the purchasing of buses. The first one being from the end of your spending plan. Mr. Snipes.
Good evening, School Board Chair, School Board Members and Dr. Heron. Tonight's proposed agenda item supports goal four of the strategic plan and is brought for your consideration in review of request to purchase seven school buses from Sunny Merriman. The school division has developed a school bus replacement system that suggests replacing ten buses annually. The purchase will permit the replacement of two fifty-three passenger buses and five seventy-seven passenger buses. Vendor Sunny Merriman is the approved vendor under state contract. The total cost for the seven buses is nine hundred fifty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars. The amount of nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars is included in the F Y twenty-two year-end spending plan. And the remaining amount of nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars is included in the F Y twenty-two operating budget. The superintendent recommends that the Board review the purchase, request for the seven school buses to Sunny Merriman and be prepared to vote at the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Snipes. Any questions for Mr. Snipes? Uh, at, at what point, uh, do we transition our year-end spending dollars directly to our funding partners? When does that begin?
You know, all of the money transfers back to the county and city at the end of each year. And then as we, we bring our end-of-year spending plan, at least we did up until this year. And then as we, when they approve that, when we purchase something, we request the money from them and they give it to us to pay for it.
That process has begun already?
That process happens every year. Now, next year, there's no longer an end-of-year spending plan.
This is what I'm asking. Right, that's what I'm asking.
Absolutely. At that point, going into next year, all of the money will transfer back to the county and city and be put towards capital improvement, uh, in particular.
Next year, December, next year, June?
Uh, June thirtieth.
June thirtieth, okay. Alright, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Snipes. Uh, you probably stand put for a bit. Seven three, uh, review request purchase three activity buses.
Thank you. Tonight's, uh, agenda item seven point oh three supports goal six of the strategic plan in it for your review and request to purchase three activity buses. In September of twenty twenty-one, Transportation Department purchased a fourteen-passenger activity bus. Um, staff requests the purchase of three additional activity buses from Sunny Merriman using state contract. The total price for each activity bus, uh, is eighty thousand, the total price for the activity buses are, is eighty thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars. The cost of the three buses total is two hundred forty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Funds are allocated within the transportation budget. Purchasing these vehicles will be for, uh, purchasing these vehicles for use by the schools and transporting smaller groups of students. It increases our availability of, to be able to transport them to V H S L into other events. The superintendent recommends that the Board review this purchase request and be prepared to vote at the se- at the, uh, seventeen, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Not seeing any questions. Um, so funds allocated with the transportation budget, does that mean through attrition savings?
They're actually in the transportation budget right now.
Transportation budget, okay. Okay. Sounds simple enough. Seven four, review invitation for bid two zero two three zero six six five, Clarebird Baker Elementary School HVAC Upgrade Project.
Thank you, Chair, Board Chair. Funding for this project was approved in the F Y twenty-one year-end spending plan in the amount of one million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The Clarebird Baker HVAC system was designed in nineteen eighty-eight and the type of systems remains unchanged. The scope of the work includes an upgrade to improve the humidity control within Clarebird Baker. An invitation for bid was issued on November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two with the due date of today, which is January fifth, twenty twenty-three. At the time the item, at the time the agenda was prepared, the bid opening process had not been conducted. And a detailed vendor and board awa- award information will be included at the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Again, funding for this project was included in the F Y twenty-one year-end spending plan and we currently have a balance remaining of one million, two hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. The superintendent recommends the School Board review the bid information and be prepared to award the Clarebird Baker HVAC Upgrade Project at the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Thank you again, sir. Uh, questions for Mr. Snipes on this one? Okay. Do we? I'm not sure if I missed it. Do we know what this is gonna cost or we don't know yet?
With the bids came in today and we, they have been opened, but we, you will not know that until the time.
Alright. I will just leave it on. Just so curious. Seven five, we'll wait till our next meeting.
Fortunately, purchasing is not unlike, like me to divulge that right now.
I understand. Okay, leave it alone. Item seven five, review request to award a contract for additional temporary mobile classroom at Stonehouse Elementary School.
Yes, uh, this, again, this request is because we've had an increased enrollment at Stonehouse which necessitates the additional instructional space to accommodate the students. This isn't a request to install an additional twenty-eight by sixty-four temporary mobile classroom. The trailer will contain two classrooms and each will be equipped with a restroom. Mo- Mobile East Modular Space will provide the classroom trailer installation using a cooperative contract number two zero one nine zero two dash zero one A. In order to receive the classroom prior to the sc- start of the August twenty twenty-three, the trailer must be ordered now. Detailed cost information will be provided at the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Funds will be included in the F Y twenty-four operating budget for this lease. The superintendent recommends that the Board review the request of award to contract to Mobile East Modu- Modular Space Incorporated and be prepared to vote at the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Uh, and so at our next meeting, we're gonna get more detail and then take action. And it's gonna, is it gonna be on the, um, discussion item within an action item or just action?
It will be an action.
Just action, okay. And the, um, why, why is the, uh, why is it such an accident kind of circumstance?
Um, as you're aware, we have to, you may not be aware, but we, we need to get Mobile East started to manufacture or at least rent the, the modulators. We need to set up, get site plans done. We need to have everything set up so that we can begin getting that installed before August of twenty twenty-three. Typically, we would like to start this at the beginning of the school year, which allows us about twelve months. So, we're about four or five months behind at the present time.
Is it accurate that there's a shortage of these, um, mobile units?
I couldn't, I couldn't say that. I can tell you that it is difficult, it will be difficult to, um, to find one, so we may have to, they may have to give us a used one.
I see, okay. Any questions for Mr. Snipes? Dr. Beers?
And you probably answered and I've just forgotten. Do we buy or lease these?
We lease these.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yes, buying them would, would, would help us have to store them and maintain them and put them back together and.
Sort of.
Is this, is this the company that all of our trailers are leased?
Yes, ma'am. This is the, it's a company that we consis- consistently use.
Yeah, Ms. Young.
I, I just have a question. There, there's two bathrooms and there we already have a number of, uh, um, mobile units out there, so, I mean, is, is there plumbing out there where the site would be or do, does it have to be installed?
Hey, well, that's, that's part of the site plan is to hook up the plumbing and everything that needs to be done because there also be a water fountain there as well.
There's a what?
There'll be a water fountain in the, there as well. So, we have to hook up water and, and electricity and all those things under the, um.
So, we are really behind, we're really behind schedule with this one.
We're a little behind, but we'll get them done. County has assisted us. We, I think we installed about nine over a summer at one time, which was the most we've ever done.
Yeah. Uh, and, in short order.
In short order.
I can just see you out there. I know you'd be out there. Thank you, Mr. Snipes.
It's gonna be us.
Yeah. Item seven six, review of twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar development. Dr. Heron.
Uh, pass right to Mr. Keever this evening, who's been working with the calendar committee. Thank you, Mr. Keever.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. As we get ready to review the presentation, there you go. Pleasure to be with you this evening to talk a little bit about the academic calendar for twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, we would like to get in a two-year cycle with the Board of bringing calendars forward. So, this evening we'll talk specifically about twenty-three, twenty-four, but we'll also give you a preview of twenty-four, twenty-five and some of the thoughts that are beginning to come forward and emerging through the committee discussion for that. Uh, by way of background, uh, wanted to share that the committee was comprised of four teachers, three principals, one from each level. Uh, there were parents that were involved in the committee, uh, through the Engage With Us platform that we have initiated this year. And then members of the central office team. In addition, Ms. Hummel served on the calendar committee as our, as our board member. There were several items that the calendar committee, uh, felt were key in terms of the consideration pieces for developing an academic calendar. The first one was the idea that we wanted to schedule in one hundred and eighty instructional days. Uh, that that was the, the minimum that we wanted to utilize and so from there, we, we attempted to build out a calendar. The committee also wanted to focus on student achievement and staff wellness. Uh, maintain and/or expand the pre-Labor Day start from previous years. Uh, ample break for the winter holiday. Um, in, in previous years, we'd said a two-week break for the winter holiday, but as you begin to look at the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar, uh, it becomes a little bit more complicated in order to do those two solid weeks as a result of where January first falls. I'll explain that more in just a bit. And then the continued strategic placement of opportunities for teacher collaboration, learning and planning during the course of the school year. Wanted to share a couple of key dates with both, uh, the school board and members of our, uh, viewing audience. Uh, school in this particular proposed calendar would begin for students on Monday, August the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, a, a key change is looking specifically at, uh, November sixth and seventh as, um, C L P days and teacher conferences days, uh, versus what we've done in years past, which would be early release days at the elementary level only toward the latter part of November. I'll expand on that more in a moment. Thanksgiving break falls the twenty-second through the twenty-fourth. The committee felt like though some of the school divisions use an early release on that Wednesday prior to Thanksgiving, that our community appreciates and values the full three days of the Thanksgiving break. A winter holiday break from December twenty-first through January second. Spring break would fall in line with the rest of the Peninsula Schools, April one through April five. And then the last day of school in twenty twenty-four would be designated as Thursday, June the thirteenth. The next slide, I'm going to try to give you a, a little bit closer snapshot. I believe in the event that you have a difficult time seeing this from your seat, you do have this in board docs if you want to be able to follow along with me. I'll start in the upper left-hand corner. August twenty-eighth, as I've mentioned, would be the first day of school. Following across the calendar to September going left to right, uh, that September one date would be a student holiday, but a teacher workday. You're obligated, if you start school prior to Labor Day by Virginia Code, to provide that Friday preceding Labor Day as a student holiday. So, that, that would be the case. We utilized that this year and last year as well. September four would be the Labor Day, uh, observance. Moving into October, a student holiday which becomes a teacher workday, collaboration, learning and planning. Uh, you'll see the change, the, the, the most demonstrable change in our particular proposed calendar for this year is the idea of the two days in early November. Uh, one, November seventh is Election Day. We have typically utilized that as a day where students are not in school. We would add a day to that, um, scenario thereby not utilizing the elementary early release. What we have found in the last couple of years and looking at this pretty critically is that two early release days of the elementary level is simply not enough time to schedule parent conferences. Uh, those conferences happen over the course of a number of days. And operationally, as a school division, it is very complicated for us to, uh, only release one particular grade level. Uh, we find that we have just barely gotten students to school and then are turning around and picking up the elementary students to get them home, which then means that middle and high school are delayed in their return home. We feel like this is a better scenario. Uh, it falls right towards the end of the first marking period and would give folks an opportunity to schedule those conferences, et cetera. Thanksgiving holiday, as I've mentioned previously, the twenty-second through the twenty-fourth. Uh, looking at the winter break with January first falling on a Monday and understanding that that would be the typical observance. We've found it difficult to schedule a full, uh, two, five-day weeks for that holiday. We did feel like two full weekends was significant, plus the, the Tuesday after January first. So, there are nine days of holiday break versus what occurred this year, which was ten. Looking in January, you have the Martin Luther King Holiday on the fifteenth of January. And then within this particular calendar, we were able to bring forward or bring back the idea that Williamsburg James City County had used previously for a, a two-day scenario at the end of the first semester, which would be the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. Again, falling towards the end of marking period two and designated the end of the first semester. Moving on into the, the second semester. There we go. President today would be designated as a, as a holiday for the school division. Utilizing March fifth as a student holiday or a teacher workday. Let me expand on that for just a second. Uh, typically, we would schedule those days on a Monday or Friday. Uh, it does look a little bit obscure for that placement to be on Tuesday. The rationale for that is it's a presidential primary, uh, in March of twenty-four. And in conversation with, uh, our, our election officials, there was a sense of potential for high voter turnout. And the preference that since eleven or twelve of our schools are polling places, that we not have students in school on that particular day. The request was, if you are looking at a day during that week to not be in school, would you please seriously consider Tuesday, the fifth? And that made sense to us as we were talking it through as a committee, that if, that if we were going to utilize a day that week for a student holiday, that we put that on the presidential primary with the high voter turnout expectation. Spring break, first full week of April, again, that's a, that's a general agreement amongst the Peninsula, um, schools this year. And then again, in twenty-four, we have recommended a student holiday, teacher learning, uh, day, teacher collaboration day, the, the last Friday in the month of April. Then into May, Memorial Day is designated on the twenty-seventh. At this point, we would be recommending high school early release on the tenth and eleventh of June. And then everybody on an early release on the twelfth and thirteenth. Uh, before you ask the question, um, we are working to solidify the possibility for graduation exercises. Ideally, that would happen, uh, close to the thirteenth. Uh, at this juncture, we're not able to confirm specific times and a, a location, though I think we can safely assume that it would need to be at the Hampton Coliseum versus Kaplan Arena based on the renovations going on there. More to come on that. We, 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 we don't have that information to provide, but do you feel like this calendar that we're bringing forward is the, the best solution for us? So, let me break it down a little bit further. Over the course of this particular calendar, uh, there are seven days that are built in for, during the school year for teachers to have uh, collaboration, learning and planning, those teacher workdays. There are three early release days at the elementary level. Those three days are the one preceding spring break, which we've utilized previously, and then the two towards the end of the school year. Three early release days at the middle school level, again, the one preceding spring break and the two at the end of the school year. And then the five early release days for the, at the high school level, because we added those two days in for high school for the possibility of final exams. We've talked previously in calendar, uh, reviews with the Board about how the marking periods may be designated. Ideally, it would be forty-five days times four to get us to one eighty. Uh, based on where we're strategically placing days for teachers to be able to collaborate and close out grades. The marking periods don't fall exactly as we would want them to, but we feel like there's a good. but we feel like there's a good balance here, and there are strategically placed days in order for teachers to be able to close out the marking period. Let me pause there before I flash to potential thoughts around twenty-four, twenty-five. May I answer any questions that you may have?
Hi, Ms. Young.
Yeah, I'm, um, I appreciate all the hard work in here, but I really would like the calendar committee to seriously consider giving that two full weeks off in December. Teachers are tired, and by cutting that, I know that one day doesn't seem like much, and I do understand about the hundred and eighty days, but I think that day is an essential day for teachers to have. And preferably, it would be the eighteenth, nineteenth and twentieth, but I think that's pushing a little too far because of the placement of the first this year, but I would really like the, uh, calendar committee to take a look at the twentieth being an additional day for students to be not in the building and teachers to be off. Uh, because the twentieth is not an early release date on here either.
It's not designated as an early release day, no ma'am.
I mean.
So if I can ask a question based on Ms. Young's question, why focus on a hundred and eighty days versus, I think it's the six hundred and sixty hours?
Nine hundred and ninety.
Nine hundred and ninety, excuse me. Have my number back.
I think philosophically, we believe that once you, once you drop below a hundred and eighty instructional days, it'll be very difficult to, to recover that. I, I think that there are, there's probably at least one division within the peninsula area that has gone below one hundred and eighty instructional days, but the rest of our colleagues maintain that number. So it's, the code is written either or. And, and I think that we feel like a hundred and eighty is the right thing for students in terms of an opportunity to interact with their teachers and gain that instructional time.
What are we on track for this year?
One seventy-nine. And that's related to the need to shift graduation.
I mean, one of the other things I, as I look at this, you mean, we could make the fourteen, I mean, if you can move that last week in June over just one day and students, is there a reason that we can't get kids out of school on the fourteenth?
One of the, should I, I'll comment on, on two of the, the suggestions and, and certainly are willing to talk a little bit more with the calendar committee. There, there were teachers represented on the calendar committee, and we had some good discussion around the two days in January, Ms. Young, and the idea to close of the semester. And the sense was that teachers really liked the idea of those two days at the end of semester one and were comfortable, I don't wanna say trading it out, but, but supplanting the two full weeks at the winter holiday, because in essence, to give the, the two full weeks, you'd have to trade away one of those days in order to then also meet the one hundred and ninety-three contractual days that our teachers work. So there are thirteen days plus the one hundred and eighty instructional days that teachers are obligated for relative to their contract, plus the ten holidays they already get. So our teachers on a two hundred and three-day contract, a hundred and ninety-three of which, uh, they're obligated to us for. So that's, that's one item. I think also that in starting prior to Labor Day, one of the recurring things that we've heard, and I, I would guess that we're going to hear it again when we open it up to the community for some feedback beginning tomorrow, is if you're gonna start early, you need to end early. Uh, and the idea of pushing to the fourteenth versus the thirteenth goes in, in opposition to that. Not that we couldn't do either one of those, but I just wanted to give you some of the background in terms of the discussion.
Ms. Hummel, who served on the committee? Thank you, Ms. Hummel.
I served on the committee, and, uh, Mr. Kever is right in that this is like trying to, to squish something. It's like wherever you push, something's gonna poke out on the other end. Um.
It's like that squeeze thing.
Yes, exactly.
Pops out.
It's exactly like that. I am just going to, uh.
It is squishy.
I'm going to get on my soapbox once again, because this is just something that I know the school system has no control over, but there are two days that, that we have no control over, that we have to close our school systems, and that's for Election Day and Primary Day because of polling locations. And I, I just wanna say that if there was some way, I mean, that, that is inconveniencing and putting a unnecessary whatever, I mean, it's necessary, but it's putting a real constraint on our ability, for example, to give our teachers two weeks off at, at, um, the winter holiday break or, or over Christmas. And, and it, it's like we ha, we're using these two dates just because we've got our schools used as polling places, and I just don't know why we can't work with the county of, or that, there can't be this plea from teachers, the community, the students to say, we'd rather have those two days in a, in a more meaningful way in our school calendar than having. So anyway, I will get off my soapbox. It has been an issue I've had for a long time.
Are, are the single student holiday days, are, are those, is that cut in stone, or are they absolutely necessary? So you could maybe take one of those?
Sure. I, I think that the part of our discussion and the impetus for those days are related to providing teachers time during the course of the school year to collaborate and plan together or to close out grades or to, to participate in some of those kinds of scenarios. What we find is that those days that, that teachers would be obligated to work are not meaningful after school is dismissed. So it, there, there, those aren't meaningful days necessarily in June or late June, and there is a, um, a likelihood that the earlier we started in August, that there would be concern from teachers of, of losing summertime. So the, the most effective way to utilize those days is to put them strategically across the school year at times that generally end marking periods. And so the reason they're placed where they are now is because it would fall every forty-three or forty-five days or so.
No, I echo the, um, that same sentiment that, cause we've done it now a couple of years now. And, um, I sort of hate to see that go simply because of.
Are you speaking to the, the winter holiday?
Yeah.
The, the one, um, one item I think to consider and worth considering is perhaps a, a parent perspective around what those two weeks or two weeks in a day may be like if you, as a parent, don't have the same type of vacation break that the school division does. And so that, that part of what we hear at times is, good heavens, I want my students back in school. Like I've, I've got to create ways to keep them meaningfully occupied. Whereas, so I, I think there's a, there's a push and pull as you begin to put this together and.
They do have that same, even, you know, this, this past holiday, they, they had that, they, they still had to deal with that.
But, but to the.
Gee, they're gonna be home for two, two weeks. But how am I, well, they figure it out.
I, I'll add to that point, if I may, that, um, that's a, that's a good point, that this year, daycares were open two days earlier than schools were because parents had to get back to work and their kids were in daycares and, uh, couldn't be left alone, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One of the things I think you find when you begin to put the calendar together, and before I get ready to talk about twenty-four, twenty-five, it's always an interesting endeavor for me to ask the calendar committee to develop what they think is their best solution of a calendar and to submit it. And then for us to talk about how challenging it was because your needs might be different than her needs, which are different than my needs, which, and so how do you try to merge the needs of students at the first point, staff, and then the community? And it is, it is squishy to use, uh, an example that we've used before this evening. We feel like what we're recommending to you is our, our best-case scenario.
So in years past, I recall, um, seeing two scenarios because there really wasn't a best-case scenario. You really needed some feedback from the board, and I think this year, it sounds like, um, Ms. Hummel can attest that, uh, this really is the best-case scenario that the committee came up with. But we do have a question on the floor as to, uh, building a full two weeks or having nine days. So I would be interested to hear from the board before we take this to action next meeting, um, the sense of the board with regards to nine days or is it ten?
As you're considering the question from Mr. Dow, we will open it up for parent, community, staff feedback beginning tomorrow that, that allows for folks to give us their thoughts on the, the version of twenty-three, twenty-four. We, we will hear that people prefer to start after Labor Day. We're going to hear that people want to start later and end earlier. We're gonna hear, so we're gonna, we're gonna hear a lot of those scenarios, and then wading through the middle of that, we, we could come back with a recommendation for an elongated break if the board felt so inclined. I think committee-wise and or administratively, we believe that what you're, what presenting to you is our, our best thinking.
So are we satisfied with the, the bill, the calendar as it is, looking around the room?
Not.
Thank you, Ms. Young.
I'm a te, I've been a teacher, and Ms. Huntley can attest. Uh, by the time you get to December, you're, I mean, we talked about quality of life. I mean, I think that two, two weeks, it makes a for, for me as a teacher, I can only speak for that for myself, but I mean, for me as a teacher, having that two weeks, it was a mental sigh of relief, especially if you have a family. I mean, I understand there are other people that are impacted by our calendar. I do understand that. But, I mean, as a teacher, that two weeks was a blessing to have because it takes you about three or four days, and I like the fact that it's before the holidays because you need two or three days to, when you're, after cleaning up all of the activities that happen in December. I mean, I mean, where's Ms. Huntley in on this? But I, personally, I prefer that two weeks. I think that two weeks is an essential thing for our teachers, and maybe I'm the only one that feels that way, but.
Is there, is there any way that in that survey that you're gonna send out, that you could have just one question that kind of addresses the two-week break in, in December, like saying this, like, here's a scenario. If we give this, decide to do the full two weeks, this is, this is what gives. And if you have any preference, or I'd be interested in what our faculty, our teachers, our staff.
Yeah, I think that one of the things I, I heard coming through was one, the two weeks. If we do that, then we would go through the Friday, and the end of June would be the, probably the easiest scenario to implement, should we go there.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, is something like that, i- is it possible to, to really to kind of zero in on that one, on that one area?
Generally, we tend to just push it out for gen, generic feedback. Open box, correct?
We built the survey that would launch tomorrow in the same way that the previous two years had been, which was just an open-ended text box. So folks could share whatever was on their mind related to, but if that's the direction of the board, a question could be.
Do we intend to have this as an action item on the seventeenth?
We do. Uh, the, the goal is for it to be open through the fifteenth for some of us to spend time on the sixteenth to disag and bring back to the board any type of, um.
Is there, is there?
Outlier feedback.
Does it need to be an action item on the seventeenth?
Doesn't. I was endeavoring to put the board in a position to have a calendar approved earlier than later, but that, I'm not.
I think I'd like to hear the feedback and, you know, be able to hear the feedback and discuss that as it relates to this question.
Well, I mean, and the other thing is, I, I don't wanna be a negative nelly, but I, I have to tell you the fact that you turn sixth and seventh of November to parent-teacher conferences for elementary, uh, teachers, I, I can't even congratulate you enough. I've always viewed those days, those are so difficult. You teach half a day and then p- parents are walking in. It's a, I see Mr. Walker nodding. That's an impossible thing to ask teachers to do, and if you've got thirty kids, or well, not thirty, cause, but twenty-nine, you said there was some that had twenty-nine. But if, even if you have twenty kids, that's ten, ten people a day you're seeing. And sometimes then, you know, they don't show up. You have to reschedule them or make other arrangements. So I love the fact that you did, uh, turn sixth and seventh into full days for our, our elementary teachers. But I'm pretty, I, I'm pretty passionate about that two weeks. I, I think you can tell that. But I, to me, it's just a no-brainer that you give our teachers those two days. So teachers, get on there and you'll help out for, maybe I'm the only one.
I'm gonna go to Ms. Donner, and then I know Ms. Huntley has been waiting.
Uh, to the question around the two weeks, I'm curious, right, to keep the instruction, you know, whether teachers would rather, right, go that extra day at the end of the year, because I also know that they're also exhausted by the end of the year. And so if that extra, if you have to add that extra day onto the fourteenth, like, is that more difficult for them versus, you know, having, versus having it mid-year? So I, I'm just curious from.
Sure.
I'd love to hear the teachers on that. And I also just wanna be very sensitive to our community is that, you know, many of us sit in a place of privilege where it's easy for us to take two days off, two weeks off. But when you look at the calendar, right, for most pe, working people, they would only get the twenty-fifth and the first off, and so then you're taking vacation days. And so it's a stack, you know, per, you know, looking at this six, seven vacation days, a lot of folks in our community can't afford to do that. And then when you have to have daycare or have, rely on family or other people to take care of your children, I just think as a community, like we said, we have, everyone has different needs. And so trying to balance, making sure our teachers have the time to reset and rest, um, and then also being very aware that not everyone in the community is privileged enough to be able to take ten vacation days to keep for their family or to pay for all those children to be there or have older siblings have to take care of their younger siblings. So just trying to balance the whole community as we think through this.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. Ms. Huntley? You've been waiting patiently. Thank you.
Yes, I want, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yes, I want Ms. Young to know that she is not alone. As a former teacher myself and a wife of a teacher, that two weeks is very essential. Um, it's just enough time. I've seen, um, comments from other teachers, like they're ready to go back. Like, okay, now, you know, I've had rest and recharge, and now, you know, I'm ready to get back to school. So, um, I, I like what Dr. Veer said, you know, families, our community need to step up. They will manage. I like the idea of, you know, childcare, um, opening it up earlier for, for their families um, to help with, you know, with that part that will be expensive for parents. Teachers are used to having two weeks for several years now, and to now to pull back and not do that, um, I don't think that will go over very well. Also, um, I'll be, I like the idea of doing a survey and finding out what the teachers think. I bet my school board check that they will want that two weeks over the, the shortage, short days. And of course, also, it's important to know what are you willing to give up to get those two weeks? So, um, but I am with Ms. Young that, you know, they need it for their, for their, um, mental health. You know, just rebounding with families, your family, just resting, taking a vacation if you can or doing nothing. And, and we do know there are teachers that do work, even in those two week, weeks, they're working on things for the classroom or working second job. So I adamantly think they need to have the two weeks for Christmas break. That's my soapbox.
Thank you, Ms. Huntley. Uh, and I hear from you that you, you'd also like to hear, uh, some feedback from the, uh, from the survey as well. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Kever?
I'll just underscore that I, I think when we do the survey, I think it would be useful to specifically give a choice. Would you prefer December twentieth versus June fourteenth, for example? And people self-identify as, as parents or teachers or staff anyway, right?
They do.
So it would be interesting to see where did the parents fall, where did, where did staff fall? You know, different, and, and to Ms. Donner's point, I, I totally understand the, you know, childcare is not necessarily easy for some people who, who, um, who work full-time, but they would, you know, that June fourteenth day is probably a workday also, so it might even out in the wash in terms of if we're swapping one day for another, in terms of finding childcare for a workday, it might, you know, there's still the same number of days overall, but it would be interesting to see the, how it breaks out with families versus teachers.
To be, to be sure I understand what, what we're talking about. We are going to ask a question, and, and one of the pieces that I, I when, when we start asking, would you prefer questions, we, we sometimes put ourselves in a position of allowing the community to vote on a calendar, and I, I, and I appreciate the feedback component, and I think that's. the community to vote on a calendar, and I, I, and I appreciate the feedback component, and I think that's an important piece, but I, I do think it's important for us to, to not necessarily have the community voting up or down a calendar. So th- the idea here is that the fourteenth of June or December twentieth, is that what I'm hearing from the, the board? That, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Then we'll, we'll work on a an opportunity for feedback around that option as, as a possibility.
And I think from my part, I appreciate that, that, um, anytime I hear that in a discussion or a presentation that there's going to come a survey, for me, we need to slow down. I think for our board, we need to slow down and give that survey, that feedback some credence, rather than on the same day, you know, taking action.
Understand, I understand.
So I, I think that what I'd like to do if we're, if the board's amenable to it is, in our next meeting, we get feedback, uh, from that survey in a discussion, um, and a, a proposed agenda item, and then place it on the consent agenda, oh, excuse me, the, um, action item for our February seventh meeting, if that makes sense. Hope I didn't fumble that too much. That makes sense. Okay. Good? Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Keever.
Yes, sir. Let me just mention that, uh, we've also started to look at twenty-four, twenty-five. And there are two ideas that are emerging for that particular academic year. Um, one of the ideas would be, and this was really committee-generated, the idea of starting on Wednesday, the twenty-first of August, which is, uh, three days prior to what we're currently doing. If, if that were to occur, it looks like school could close in twenty-twenty-five on Friday, June the sixth. Um, in this particular iteration, while all of the dates have not been worked out, it does appear that the two-week winter holiday break would be particularly easy to accomplish, just based on where things fall with respect to December twenty-five and Jan. One. Uh, version two of the calendar that we're looking at is a, is a more normal start for us, which is Monday, the twenty-sixth, with a concluding date around June eleven. Again, based on where the, the holidays fall, it's a, it's likely to be a, a two-week winter break there. Solid. Our goal, so that we can get in this two-year process, is to, um, look specifically with the committee at two versions of this and then come back to the board a little bit later this spring and have, and ask for your approval on twenty-four, twenty-five, so that can be out and we can, we can get into a two-years process.
Is the intent to also do a survey for that?
Well, the, the, the current intent, as we came in this evening, was to get feedback on both of these concepts. Like, we, we were gonna put this in front of folks to let them know what, what the options and versions we're considering, but we were not, we're not prepared to give them all of the breakdown of dates yet, but get a reaction to, how do you feel about starting quote-unquote even earlier? Um, because what we've heard pretty consistently, start early and early. Uh, we have not quite been able to get to that mark yet, and we feel like with version one, we're getting closer to that. So we could, we can parse that out, uh, and, and focus specifically on twenty-three, twenty-four. Do another round of community feedback on twenty-four, twenty-five.
Sorry to go.
Well, I just think it's good that if, if we were ever going to consider starting as early as August twenty-first, that we are putting it out this early, because that's, that's, that's more than fair for everyone planning trips or, you know, thinking about summer of next year. So I think it's awesome that we're this far ahead. How, wh- whether we put it out this week or next week, I think it's still, we're so far ahead in that, that it's it's good.
Yeah, I do think it's good to have a two-year.
Yeah.
We're trying to get there.
And, and I do appreciate, and I feel, uh, you know, for any survey, like, changes that you may need to make, I, I mean, there is that. You've probably got it ready to push send, don't you?
Okay, we can, we can delay for a day and, and, and change it a little bit. That, that's not a problem. We've not got the gift of time as well.
Okay, yeah. And I, I do see Mr. Keever's point in it. It's not a popularity contest, right? It's not gonna be a popularity contest.
Rules, right.
And, and it's not gonna be get your vote and ballot stuff and whatever, I mean.
I, I echo that is, is the, the, the years I was on that committee, it's like everybody takes it really seriously and, and they're really comprehensive discussions about it. And, and at the end of the day, it's yeah, it's the best we can do, given what we, our constraints, what we have to work with. It's tough. I know.
Yes, kudos to the calendar committee.
Noble work. Thank you all. Thank you, Ms. Huntley, for serving on that committee. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Keever. Thank you, sir. All right. Move on to item seven-seven, review temporary increase in substitute pay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, uh, Ms. Yu and Mr. Baker are going to take us through a few slides on proposed revisions to our substitute pay, and they're going to provide a little bit of context for this request this evening. And I believe for Baker is starting. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. Over the course of the past year, we've struggled to secure the necessary number of substitute teachers and bus drivers. The shortage of necessary assistance presence presents challenges for the daily operation of schools. And in analyzing substitute pay rates and comparing with neighboring divisions, there is a need to increase our daily subrates for teachers, nurses, and bus drivers. We've reviewed our fill rates for teachers for the current year as compared to the previous three school years. This chart shows our fill rate by month with an overall average to the far right. You can see in school years eighteen, nineteen, and nineteen, twenty, the average fill rate was ninety and ninety-one percent as shown by the green and blue bars on the fire, far right. On average, the fill rate for the last school year was fifty-one percent, and the data through December for the current school year has an average fill rate of sixty-four percent. We've reviewed substitute pay rates for our neighboring divisions and found we are the lowest of the pay at ninety dollars per day for the base subrate, as well as the lowest for long-term rate of a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day. Uh, two divisions, New Kent and Hampton, have outsourced their substitutes, so the pay rates were not available.
What do you mean by outsourced? What do you mean by that?
Pardon?
What do you mean by that?
They've hired a temporary agency to, to, to do it, like, like a Kelly Services or ESS, or. I believe this is.
Okay, Ms. Dr. Veer.
No, I'm sorry.
I mean, I, I understand that really high, um, I, I guess you call it absentee in twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two year, which was the worst part of the pandemic. And I would imagine, uh, I know that the pay is an issue, but I also would think that a lot of people who might have been substitutes chose not to do that simply because of what was going on at, at that particular, during that, that particular year. I don't know, I don't know if I'm accurate about that, but uh, it, it'd be interesting from this point on to see if you start to see an increase in the number of, uh, but I, you know, I don't know. It, maybe it is the money. I, I sometimes, I think during that year, no amount of money could have, uh, you know, I, I think it would have been just hard to get full, get long-term subs, given the seriousness of what that pandemic was like back then.
Yeah, we certainly lost a lot of our regular substitutes during that time and didn't get them back.
Right, that's right.
And I think because other divisions around us are much more competitive for a daily rate, we have to change our rate to see if we can pull those people back again.
Yeah.
Uh, we're obviously going to take, you know, the starting point of this and, and look at our numbers very carefully and report back to the board to see if it's actually made a difference or not.
Right. I agree. In order to be more competitive with our neighboring divisions and have an impact on our fill rate for the remainder of the school year, we are proposing the following rate changes. We have a tiered pay rate for substitute teachers and nurses, and the pay increases as the sub works consecutive days. Here you'll see the recommended changes to the substitute teachers and nurses' pay rates. The base rate for subs for both teachers and nurses would increase from ninety dollars to one hundred dollars. When a sub reaches day eleven, the pay would change from one hundred and ten dollars to one hundred and twenty-five dollars, and on day twenty-one, it would change to, from one hundred and fifteen dollars to a hundred and forty-five dollars. The long-term pay rate is recommended to change from one hundred and twenty-five to one hundred and forty-five dollars as well. We're also recommending an additional layer to our substitute pay rate and proposing paying certified teachers two hundred dollars a day. We currently have approximately twenty to thirty retired teachers in our substitute pool. In addition, we are recommending changing the substitute bus driver pay rate from fourteen dollars an hour to fifteen dollars and seventy cents an hour, as we have struggled to fill bus driver positions and get good substitute pool for bus drivers as well.
Certified teachers, is there any differential pay right now for certified teachers versus?
There's not.
Okay, so I, I can appreciate that, but I'm, I'm really curious as to why it's almost one hundred percent more in this proposed. I mean, like, that's dou- almost double the pay.
We're hoping to, to bring back retired teachers that were from our system, folks that have that experience, they've been teachers, they've had that training, they've been in the classroom for years potentially.
Could it also potentially encourage teachers that are currently around retirement age to go, whoa, I might as well just retire and sub?
I, I think they're gonna retire potentially anyway if they're gonna retire. I think, I think we would love to have them back as a substitute.
At double the rate. Okay, I'm, I'm.
It's still, it's still significantly less than their daily rate, most.
I know, I just, I just, that's a, a big, a big difference.
I think the biggest thing for us is looking at the quality of the substitute coming into the classroom, because we have so many substitutes operating. If we can attract former teachers, you can walk into a classroom and create some continuity of instruction, even in the absence of the regular teacher, then that's a bonus every single day. So if I, you know, an elementary teacher was into an elementary school who's taught a certain grade or even any grade, they pretty much can pick up where the regular teacher would have left off, whereas a lot of other subs don't have that background to do that.
Okay, and, and of those twenty certified teachers that are in the subpool right now, do we have any kind of an estimate on what the budget impact would be for their, you know, looking at all the sub-hours that they've done this past year and what the budget impact would be if their rate went from, you know, seventy-five to two hundred dollars a day? It, maybe it's not that big of a deal, like, maybe it's not that big of a budgetary impact, but I'd be interested to know.
I think there's a significant impact, and we can certainly get that for you. Um, the key right now is we can't get anybody. And those that we have, we want to keep. And, and when our neighboring systems are paying so much more than us, um, it makes a difference.
They have the same, having the same, they still having challenges.
Oh, absolutely. In fact, uh, at least one of their system has created a a plan for retired teachers that they bring them back to substitute at a percentage of their salary if they, if they work a certain number of days, which is significantly more expensive than this.
So, so other, or school systems have this pay differential?
They have, they actually have a, a special program that, that teachers, retired teachers sign a, sign a contract and commit a certain number of days and get a percentage of their former salary, which is more than this.
Um, how does, if, 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 if you start to get teachers improved, two hundred dollars a day, um, is, is pretty attractive, because for five days, that's a thousand dollars. Where does VRS play into this? Are they, I know that if you make over a certain amount, the VRS starts nibbling away at your, how's that work? Can you work that, or?
When you retire, you can only work eighty percent, I believe it is, of what you worked when you were a full-time employee.
Eighty percent of?
Eighty percent of the time, so.
Time. What about the, uh, money?
I'm not aware of an issue with the money, as far as VRS is concerned.
So that, 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 that might be part of the, that would be part of the pitch. Is, you know, you can come back and do this and still pick up your retirement check.
Ms. Donner?
Um, and so I saw the cost is, or maybe I've jumped ahead, um, i- in terms of the cost and paying for it, um, so from what I'm hearing, there is a certain amount of staff position or faculty positions that are unfilled anyway, and then there's this cost. Is there enough of an offset between where we've got gaps in the budget, because we have people who are miss, we have positions that are open that would then co- cover the cost of, I think what you showed later is an increase to be able to, to do this?
I believe our last slide, the CFO is gonna cover this.
I'm sorry, I jumped ahead.
It's a great segue, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So the estimated cost to make these changes to the substitute pay rates is approximately six hundred and thirty-five thousand for the remainder of the year. This is the highest cost that we expect it to be, as it does assume we would have a hundred percent fill rate for the remainder of the year. So again, that'd be the highest cost, um, that it could be. And yes, the funds are available from those vacant positions that, um, Mr. Baker spoke about earlier this evening to cover this additional cost in the subpay rate.
That answers your question, Ms. Donner?
Yes, thank you.
That six thirty-five is based on ninety dollars or a hundred and ten?
Hundred and forty-five. It's the, the highest rate that we're assuming. And again, it assumes a hundred percent fill rate every day. And on average, I think we've had about a hundred absences a day.
So, so would those higher pay go, be retroactive for going back to January first?
Going back to January first is what we're proposing. That'd be effective January first, and they would get paid in February for the time worked in January.
Okay, and am I understanding correctly that you're saying you feel that you could guarantee a hundred percent fill rate, meaning no vacancies?
No, I'm not saying we're gonna guarantee. I'm saying this cost is based on assuming we have a hundred percent fill rate, so therefore it's the highest additional cost that I would anticipate it being.
Okay.
Uh, it's likely gonna be less than this.
Cause, right, because you're saying we can't, we're having a hard time even finding people.
We're on a sixty percent fill rate right now, so if you take that into consideration, if, even if we were to move that up to eighty percent, we would be doing extremely well. And we'll have a very short time to monitor this before we start to look at keeping this in the next budget. So we won't have much data to make an informed decision moving forward, but we're going to look at it and bring what we can to the board.
Just kind of a pilot for the remainder of the year.
Yes, ma'am.
How do we pay for it?
Vacant positions that we have currently, attrition savings.
And, um, were you able to, I'm sure, maybe you did, um, reverse engineer it so that it's at a hundred and twenty-five dollars versus the one forty-five? With the, you know what I mean? So a hundred forty-five proposed rate at the long-term sub, that shows the six hundred and thirty-five dollars, right?
Thousand.
At a hundred.
Yeah, I, the calculation is based on a hundred, everyone would be paid a hundred and forty-five each day, and we know that's not accurate.
I guess my curiosity is if this wasn't in place and you were looking at the hundred and twenty-five dollar long-term, long-term rate that's in place now, what would we be paying? You know what I mean? Does that make sense? My question makes sense.
Say it again.
Okay, so the long-term sub rate as it is now is a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Going through the rest of the year, right, your next slide, through beginning January one, through the remainder of the year. Um, I'm just curious what that number would be if we weren't looking at the proposal of a hundred and forty-five dollar long-term sub proposed rate. We just looked at the current daily rate at the long-term sub number, one twenty-five.
So you take one twenty-five times a hundred times.
Times the number of days left.
Yes.
We don't know what that is. I'm no good at math, that's one.
I never bring my calculator up to the table with me.
Well, I just would be interested, I, I, I apologize, I shouldn't have assumed that you had reverse engineered it, but I would be interested to know. Doesn't have to happen right now, but.
Yeah, I would also think that, you know, places like Newport News, they have to, they have to come up with more money. They have to, they have just because of the nature of that school system. And, uh, in order to get somebody to come back um, and teach, uh, they probably need to do, spend a hundred and eighty-five. I don't, I don't, I don't know if we have to go that high, but, um, another question I have related to that, Mr. Baker is, um, and again, you may have said this some other time, but what does that, what does it mean to say outsourced?
They're using.
They hire a company that does it.
Yes, sir, they're you, like a temporary.
Do we know what their numbers are or how much they get paid?
There it's a like a flat rate on top of whatever the rate they're gonna charge potentially, so like if they were gonna give a hundred and forty-five dollars as a fee to the other system, to the to the company, like a Kelly Services or a temporary agency or that would that would be that.
Is that any more effective or not?
Um it's it's even more costly because you gotta pay it.
For for.
Yes, for the for the system, so like a Hampton or New Kent, they're they're paying uh even more so because somebody's gotta administer the plan uh and pay the um the overhead for that other organization.
I'm I'm just curious, comparing Newport News and Hampton.
I I think for us, we were, you know, the challenge, you know, the the current teachers if that are having to cover the classes and we're breaking up classes and and the disruption that's happening. If we could get above this sixty-four percent fill rate, because that means there's so many classes going unfilled and and the burden that it's placing on our current teachers and our current staff. Um it's it's, we recommend it's gonna be money well spent. So just as an update, the answer to my question was essentially what the worst-case scenario, looking at the current number for the maximum uh at a hundred and twenty-five would be four hundred and three thousand dollars versus what we're asking for at a hundred and forty-five dollars long-term sub, six hundred and thirty-five. For a hundred, four hundred and three thousand.
I I still have to say, I I I'm a, I understand, I'm still struggling with the going from ninety dollars a day to two hundred dollars a day for a certified teacher. I I it's just such an a big increase and yeah, I just, I struggle with that, I.
I mean, that is certainly a new thought for us because we haven't had that as a separate entity.
Well, like the other thing is, I noticed when when you, we do the uh personnel stuff. I don't I don't know how often it is, but uh but clearly there are long-term subs who then go on to take on a a full-time job. I've seen, you know, there are at least a couple of those every every time, so it's it's like getting it's a way to get into the system, although that that shouldn't be that hard, but and the other thing I don't know is they start off as a long-term, pick up the necessary certification. So then they are a certified teacher and they take a full-time job.
Ms. Donner and then Ms. Ordigo.
Sort of to what Ms. Hummel was just saying is, I do some of my back-of-the-iPhone math. You know, at a two hundred dollar daily rate, if you were to say, I think you said there's a hundred and ninety-three kind of teachers days, so annualized, that's about thirty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. If you thought about it as an annualized salary, and so as I think about that for someone who's a certified teacher who um as was mentioned, can come in, hit the ground running and actually be able to keep the classrooms going. That is just a fraction of what, uh you know, an entry-level teacher would make at the fifty-one thousand, so to me well, I can I can understand how optically that is a large leap when I think about the value that they're actually delivering. If you were to annualize that, it's actually less than they would make as a full-time teacher, and so from my perspective, that is you know, they they are worth at the very least that to have a certified teacher in the classroom.
And Ms. Donner, Ms. Ordigo?
Yeah, just some clarifying questions for myself. Are we saying that the two hundred dollar rate is if a if a certified teacher came in as a long-term sub? Or is that even just like a one, a one-time, one-day?
We're saying if you if you're highly qualified and you've been a certified teacher and you're coming back to teach in a subposition that we prepared to pay you two hundred dollars a day.
Whether it's one day in the year or a, you know, for the rest of the semester or something.
Yes, ma'am, a lot of our long-term subs are not quite highly qualified teachers, they're very often going into teaching and are and haven't taught before or they don't, or they're not qualified.
I was just asking that because I I I can see where a lot of the value mentioned comes in the um continuity, so so it would pay for itself, you know, be more valuable if it was a longer time than if it was a one-day sub, so I was just curious, and then the certification, I'm assuming that many, it just means that at some point in their lifetime, they were certified. So I imagine many retirees don't maintain a certification, an active certification, does does that make a difference?
I think it's a certified teacher with current certification.
Would they have, would they have to react like?
A lot of even retirees, they they keep their cert- their certification active, so they can do stuff like this. And we're hoping even some of that, like Dr. Beers was mentioning, other teachers that have maybe work-life balance issues, this might actually encourage other teachers to to say, hey, I I I have to stay home, but I could work, I could work on Fridays and Mondays for you, yeah. And and that and they're not retired, we that we would love to have them come back. So let me ask, does this proposal, this recommendation have the support of the board for our next meeting? Looks like it does, Ms. Hummel, yeah?
Yes, I think I just was surprised, that's all, it was not knowing about it ahead of time.
Ms. Hundley, if you're with us, uh did you have any questions or comments regarding substitute pay?
I'm fine with with the discussion and comment, yes.
All right, thank you, I think we're ready for to take action on this in our next meeting, thank you, Ms. Young, I appreciate your guidance here. Uh item seven, eight, review civics and economics textbook selection and adoption process. As Ms. Ford makes her way up, I do wanna give a plug to our board that um they are looking for a board member to serve as a volunteer on this textbook committee. Um I think Dr. Beers has one underway already. Uh you're serving on the uh gifted math, right?
Oh, no, that's that's not the same thing.
Not the same thing, so uh as we listen to the presentation, uh I I might ask for a volunteer at the end of the meeting. Ms. Young has already thrown her hat into the ring, okay, thank you, Ms. Young.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and in response and in alignment with our policy, we're bringing for the forward to the to the board tonight uh information regarding the new textbook adoption process coming up soon, Ms. Ford.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board and Dr. Heron. This evening I am presenting the proposed project plan for the selection and adoption of textbooks and instructional resources for the eighth-grade civics and economics course. Pending your approval, we anticipate beginning the work later this month. The project plan includes three essential items. The timeline for the review of the selected textbooks, the evaluation criteria and the stakeholder stakeholder roles represented on the review committee. Throughout the four-week review period, textbooks under consideration will be available in every middle school for staff review. And the resources that are provided by the publishers in a digital format will be available to the community through our division website. We will host an evening textbook fair for the community and the textbooks will be available at the central office during business hours for onsite review once the review process begins. All stakeholders will have an opportunity to provide feedback that the review committee will consider prior to making its textbook recommendation which will be shared with the school board in March. I'm happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Ms. Young just volunteered, maybe she has a question or two?
Well, I I mean, one of the things that we had, I don't know, I should even bring this up, but one of the things that we had, we had is a community member that spoke tonight, I mean, and I've been on those committees before. Um yes, there is a point in process where you have to um you have to have a method, of course, but but there's points. But my question was, I mean, when you have people in the community that that participate in a survey of any kind. How are are those weighted differently than the the points of the committee? I mean, I think that's a legitimate question.
During our last um process in the spring, we discussed having different rubrics. Um rubrics for the review committee, um where there would be items that instructional staff are perhaps um more um up to date on some of the information to refer to, and we would have community-based rubrics. I believe where we've landed with this um particular project is we will continue to have one rubric. However, it through the process last spring of looking at our policy and our regulation. We greatly reduced the number of items that would be evaluated during the overall review process. So the re- rubrics for both groups will be the same and they will be much shorter in length than they were.
Ms. Hummel?
So I served on um a textbook committee in the past and I have to say I appreciate the the change maybe in the rubric to shorten it, but I did not at all feel qualified to even answer the questions on the rubric because I was not a teacher. And I did not um understand even like the how I could look at the textbook and know, for example, how that would address the SOLs or address a sped uh need and how the interpretation of the material for special ed kids works, I mean, like I had a whole wonderful new appreciation for our professional teachers that are evaluating a textbook eh with those eyes. Uh because they're the ones that actually have to teach the material and they have to have all the students um show their command of that knowledge, that con- the concepts and everything. So I um I would not say that my input should be weighed the same as a professional educator. I just I would be community, I have I have a a different perspective. It's an important perspective, but I don't think that my perspective as a community member, which is how I was envisioning myself going through this, would would possibly outweigh the professional teachers that are looking at textbooks and determining how the the material needed to be taught in order for the students to know the knowledge to be able to pass the tests. So that that was my feeling on that.
Dr. Beers?
Um I I think that's a, that is a really good point, I I felt the same way on on several that I've done. Um maybe the questions are questions to ask citizens. Um are would might be, what are the things you think are important? Are not important in a textbook, I don't think they are going to be able to respond to the kinds of questions that really get into the nuts and bolts of the content. How a teacher is going to use it, all of those kinds of things. Because what I recall all last year, most of the comments that were made by parents did not focus on the pedagogical parts of the books. They focused on covers, they focused on some language that they did not find um that they found um uh they 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 found offensive. Uh maybe some of the topics, uh so I think it's, it is um um it is hard to equate those. You know, theoretically, uh you know, teachers, professionals should look at a text from where how it fits in to the curriculum, how it fits into the assessment, SOLs, whatever it might be. Um in interesting ways or not, or whatever it might be, uh holding off judgment. But it's a tricky, it's tricky, it was tricky last year. Um and um and I think teachers try to respond to um the elements in a textbook in a um a a pretty serious, um practical uh concrete sort of way, um as um neutral as they possibly can be.
Thank you, Dr. Beers.
That's my, that's my, that's my thoughts.
Thank you, Dr. Beers, Ms. Donner?
I just have a newbie question, so how is the list of textbooks that will be evaluated generated?
This list of textbooks was taken from the VDOE's approved textbook list for this course.
Thank you, so these are textbooks that the Virginia Department of Education has said school districts, school divisions, these are the textbooks that we recommend. Look at them and then decide based on your district which ones make the most sense.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And if I could, in reference to the concerns about the evaluation criteria, I understand and it is it's difficult to create one rubric that meets a number of needs. I think one of the benefits of the process that we used last year and will continue to use this year is also giving each reviewer the opportunity to add narrative comments, so if there's something specific that they want to share in reference to the resource they are reviewing that perhaps doesn't seem to fit the evaluation criteria we have, then we certainly will be collecting that information and considering that as well.
Ms. Ordigo?
Um I I wanna say I I agree with um Ms. Hummel and Dr. Beers that that a teacher who, you know, say has an advanced degree in in a science or any subject eh and is going to be um teaching, instructing, has a has a different perspective and is evaluating curriculum from from a different viewpoint, that being said, um I think I think one of the concerns is that it's just unclear what happens with the community input. If it's if it's weighted at all, I mean, it could be that people fill fill out out pieces of paper and nothing happens with it, I think it's just an understanding of ahead of time of here's here's how it's weighted, here's how it's evaluated. This is where perhaps even, you you know, making comments without without identifying names. Probably here's what was what was said, here it is, I think it's more just the I don't, knowledge of what happened to the information versus um whose whose opinion matters more. Um and and a fully understanding that teachers who have have to teach are looking at it in a very different way and with knowledge of SOLs, at the same time, I I don't think we should assume that all citizens are not um highly intelligent or educated people, many people in the community have advanced degrees in a lot of these subjects and I'm sure that people who who are very knowledgeable about science, history, economics are the those are going to be the subjects that they gravitate toward, if they wanna take time and come to a a book fair, they're probably they probably have some some knowledge of what they're looking at, so just to round it out, I think that we should not assume that citizens don't know what they're looking at, um of course acknowledging that teachers' opinions must be weighted differently. Um and then maybe just trying to capture a way to to let the public know, here's what we did with your input. And I don't know, I don't know what that looks like, but just to, just so it doesn't disappear.
Thank you, Ms. Ford, I think we've heard from everybody and I think that looking at the um timeline here that the board will um meet on the seventeenth and seek to approve the um civics and economics textbook selection committee uh and the adoption process at the next meeting, is that right?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ford, I appreciate your time. Okay, all right, we're on to item eight, our consent agenda. Uh which includes approval of minutes from the December seventh, twenty twenty-two meeting. Uh approval minutes minutes from the December sixth, twenty-two meeting. Approval of resolution R one twenty-three principal appreciation week. Approval of policy I G A K alternatives to animal dissection. Approval of revisions to policy IL testing programs, approval of revisions to policy G C B C staff benefits. Approval of revisions to policy G C B D staff leaves and absences. Approval of revisions to policy G C B D A sick leave bank. Approval of revisions to G C B E family and leave, excuse me, family and medical leave, F M L A. Approval of revisions to G C B E A leave without pay. Approval of creation of policy G C B E B military leave and benefits. Approval of revisions to policy G C D B D si- sick leave donation and transfer. And finally, eight thirteen, approval of retirement of policy G C P C, retirement of full-time staff members. Is there a member that would give a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo, is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Hummel, Ms. Soller?
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley? Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
And Mr. Dowell?
Aye, all right, uh moves us to our action items for the evening, can I have a motion to approve our personnel actions?
Mr. Chair, I uh move that uh that we accept the personnel actions um be approved as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Beers, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young and Ms. Soller.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye, all right, our board member comments, since Ms. Hunley's not with us, we're gonna make her go first. Hunley, you have anything for us?
Yes, I do, I sent a.
I sent a picture to Ms. Hummel to share with you all at the end of the meeting. I do miss y'all. It's a good miss, a very good miss, but I was able to attend to the meeting and looking out at a beautiful view. I see that it's a full moon, so I'm praying that all goes well in the schools, because as a teacher, I remember full moons. I just want to say, Ms. Donner, welcome. You did an awesome job. I remember having butterflies in my stomach the first meeting and, as a newbie. So I just wanted to let you know, if you had any of those feelings, I can still relate to them, but you did awesome. Also, I enjoyed the conversation just now. I know I didn't get in on the textbook things, but I, I agree with everybody's, you know, little, you know, what each person said. I do believe it's important to, that whoever's going to use it really needs to, their weight needs to go into that. But also that, I have no objection to community members, but I would like someone to, to have some knowledge of, of, of what. I don't want someone to sit there and say, I really didn't feel like I could put any input. So that's really important to me. And I look forward to being back with you all the next meeting. And I think that was all I needed to say. Thank you, Ms. Aller, also for helping me through all the technology stuff from, from Virginia to, to Cancun. Thank you so much. I couldn't have got on without her, her help.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Be safe. We look forward to seeing you. Ms. Young?
Did I look like I wanted to say something?
Okay, we'll move on.
No, I, I do want to say something. Happy New Year to our, our staff and faculty and hope this is a great year that going forward, that pandemic is behind us and things have calmed down and, and hopefully over the holidays, you got the rest that you needed. And please reply to the survey, because I think the calendar committees will need that information about the two weeks. But really grateful that we're, we're back and, and I think it's a good start to the new year. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Donner?
I just want to say to Mr. Chair, Dr. Heron, and the rest of the school board members, thank you so much for the onboarding. Beth has been fabulous every time, like, I can't get into this. She's been so helpful and the, all of the leaders of the different departments within this division taking time right before the holidays to meet with me and onboard. And to Julie, my mentor, appreciate it. So I'm looking forward to working with all of you and I'm working, looking forward to getting out into the schools and meeting with school leadership and students and just really being a part of it. So thank you so much for the warm welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. Dr. Beers?
I, I echo that. I, I really look forward to this year working with my fellow school board members and really glad to see, happy to have Ms. Donner on the school board as well. I, I just really wanted to say one other thing. There was a comment made by a speaker tonight, and I had to say something about that. And, and that is the, the comment about the Hampton Roads Educational Telecommunication Association, Educational Advisory Committee, as we know it as, those of us who go down there, as Heretta. That's how we pronounce it, Heretta. Anyway, I think what, and I take some of that responsibility is I, I think of, there are members of the public that don't fully understand the role and the relationship between local school divisions and WHRO. It is true that the divisions pay an annual fee to WHRO, but what is not readily recognized by the public is the incredible amount of resources that become available without cost to our, to our students and to our teachers. And what it really made me think about is, we get that annual report. I really, I, I think somehow that needs to be posted so that if parents have concerns about it or they have questions about it, they can see the kinds of things that WHRO sponsors puts together, courses, materials, all kinds of things. And we haven't, I haven't been doing that, and I think it would be helpful for the public to see that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Hummel?
So I want to congratulate the new leadership, and I really want to thank you, Mr. Dow, for taking on the chair for another year. I have been sitting back as a school board member, seeing the inner workings of, you know, what it takes to be a chair, what it takes to be a chair in this environment. So I just want to say, you're appreciated. And, and the extra time that you take in, in working with us and working with the, the community and the respect you show to everyone is, is appreciated. And then, Ms. Ordigo, I'm going to be very excited to have you as vice chair. And I want to thank Dr. Beers for his role as vice chair in the past and, and then turning over parliamentarian position, you. I'm very excited about that. So anyway, I just.
Oh, how well I remember it.
So, yes, this is, you've done this before, so it should be easy. So anyway, want to thank you guys, want to welcome Ms. Donner. Really excited that you're going to be on the board with us and jealous of Ms. Hunley in Cancun with the picture she just sent, which wasn't very nice. Thanks a lot to all of our teachers that had hopefully a wonderful break and are ready to be recharged. And I cannot tell you how many parents that I have talked to that are very excited that school is back in session. They are very, very excited. So there's this renewed energy. And I hope that all of the changes that we're making with the budget and the pay for substitutes and, you know, all of our, our plans come to fruition. I, I hope we can have a good year ahead, so thank you.
Ms. Ordigo?
Yeah, I just want to say first of all, happy new year to everyone who's here, everyone who's watching. I'm excited for this, this next calendar year and all that we have ahead of us. Of course, welcome to Mrs. Donner. Very excited to get to work with you in the little bit that we've gotten to know each other recently. I, I really think you're going to be in a wonderful addition. And already tonight, you can tell just by the questions you asked that you're a great fit and this is going to be, it's going to be wonderful to work with you. So welcome. Again, congratulations to Greg. Thank you for taking that role on for a second term. And then, of course, thank you to Dr. Beers for serving last year as vice chair. You did a wonderful job. I know it was a lot of extra time and effort and work, things that maybe weren't even as visible as what the chair did. I think everyone could kind of see the chair. Maybe the vice chair was not as, as seen, but I know it was a lot of effort and you did a wonderful job. So thank you. And thank you for your support for me and all of your support as I endeavor to fill Dr. Bear's shoes. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Yeah, again, welcome, Ms. Donner. You are a fantastic addition to this board. We can already see it with your questions and your demeanor and your, your forethought and your questions as well. I'm really looking forward to working with you and watching you mature into your role here and, and offering great leadership for your community. I'm looking forward to having a great year this year. Twenty twenty-three is going to be a fantastic year. And it got off to a very nervous start for me, so much so that I'm in the church, in the sanctuary, praying, and I'm looking for Kira's phone number. I'm like, I gotta call Kira. Got to call Kira. It's going to be tough today without Kira because she just kept us and kept me right on track. And so thinking about Kira today, thinking about Jim Kelly today and all the great people, the great mentors that we've had. But we add Ms. Donner, and we've got a great team, and I'm really looking forward to twenty twenty-three, looking forward to our board retreat, looking forward to the different conferences that we're going to be joining each other on. It's going to be a fantastic year with great leadership and your senior leadership team behind you. I'm really confident about the success of this division this year. I really am. Let's look forward to our upcoming events. So if you don't recall what committee you're on, I'm sorry. On January eleventh, our Twenty-First Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee is meeting at three thirty here in the annex. January twelfth, the CAC Special Education Advisory Committee meeting at six thirty here in the annex. January nineteenth, the Policy Committee is meeting at eight thirty a.m. in room one oh eight, next door, I guess. That's next door, right? Yeah, okay. And then the Student Advisory Committee meeting on February first at three p.m. at the Lafayette High School Media Center. And our upcoming meetings, we have a budget work session again on January seventeenth at four p.m. in the gymnasium, followed by closed session back here in the annex at six. And then our pre-budget public hearing back in the gymnasium at six thirty, followed by our regular meeting on the same day, of course, on the seventeenth in the gymnasium. Closed session on February seventh at four here in the annex, followed by our work session and action items at four thirty. And then I don't believe for item twelve, we have any items for our consent agenda in our next meeting. I don't think we do. And so with that.
Mr. Chair, I believe the work session will actually be in this room, followed by closed session. And then we, then we'll go to the gymnasium.
Work session, we're talking about on the seventh, work session, action items here. Did I say the gym?
She says the gym here, but it is, will be in this room.
Okay. Talking about the seventh, February?
Seventeenth, oh, seventeenth, just, just the work session, four to six, just on the budget, so we can have conversation.
Thank you for that clarification. So we'll be back here. All right. With that, this meeting's adjourned.